Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, December 17th, 6:30 PM. The call of hearing room at the townhouse. I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is 6:31. Three selectmen are present right now. I'm expecting with whether the others will be here, perhaps a little bit later. Four selectmen are here. Mr. Kalenda.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda, public comment, if there's any. Seeing none, I'll go to scheduled appointments. Mr. Cipriano.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We were directed to prepare basically reports on the staff. I'm sorry?
You might go. Yeah, turn your mic on. This is a little far away.
A little too far away? Okay. Is that fine?
Just up a little bit. I think that's...
Is there a green light?
Is there a green light? Okay. Okay. We were directed to prepare some reports on legal affairs for the last quarter of this year, and we have submitted to you three reports. Report one is basically general highlights of legal issues in the last three months. The second report has to do with tax foreclosure proceedings in the town, which is ongoing with the Director of Finance as tax collector. And the third report is a general litigation report, which basically just tells you the status and where these cases are at. So I'm going to start with the general legal service report, which dated December 13th, and it starts with, in fact, four entries that relate to classes that we conducted, and this was in conjunction with the requests of town officials and at the direction of the town administrator. And the first class was, I think, well-known, was with the town clerk, and that was well-attended early on. And then subsequently, we had a rather informal workshop class with the planning board, and it was a well-attended, and there was a lot of interesting questions. We gave advice, general direction, not discussing any particular cases, but just how, in fact, how to handle administrative matters before them. The third class had to do with the zoning Board of Appeals, and that got more into some intense legal issues because, as you all know, the zoning Board of Appeals is a quasi-adjudicatory administrative law board. The one interesting question or request that the zoning Board of Appeals had was that they wanted to see in effect a global class amongst the Conservation Commission, the planning board, and the zoning Board of Appeals. And the principal reason for that was to understand jurisdiction, which is an issue that many town boards might face is how far do we go? How much authority do we have on a certain topic, especially if it's multi-review? And where does some other board or commission pick up? So I welcome that opportunity sometime early in 2020, and we will have, hopefully, that global discussion. And I'll try to answer any of the administrative questions that the board or commission members might have. The fourth and last one we had was with the building commissioner and their staff and the zoning Board of Appeals staff, and it had to do with one particular legal issue relative to prior existing non-conforming structure, in this case, one of the more complicated areas of zoning law. But it also went into just a general discussion of issues that they might see, answering their questions. This, again, was very informal. It was in the office of the building commissioner. And that also went very well. I mean, everybody is very interested in making sure that as citizen volunteers or appointed officials and elected officials, that they're doing the right thing. That's the overall sense I got from all of these workshops, and I welcome that opportunity. The second part of the general report goes to specific legal opinions that we addressed. I don't know if you want me to go through the list, but if there's any questions you might have. But the planning board tends to submit very precise, detailed opinion requests in the form that I prefer, and they do have a lot of particular legal issues that need to be addressed, and we try to guide them as best we can. And another principal opinion issue in the last couple of months has been, in effect, the interpretations of the anti-Aide Amendment to the state constitution, particularly as it relates to the so-called bell tower and the St. Mark's Church. And the Community Preservation Committee was focusing on that twice, and we gave them two opinions, and they were on top of the issue of whether or not you could expend community preservation funds, which, of course, will be appropriated by town meeting for the purpose of that particular restoration. And we came to the, after much scrutiny, we came to the conclusion that they could. And that particular structure, most recently, we were told, and we reviewed that restriction, was the subject of a historical restriction imposed by the state Historical Commission, which is a subsidiary of the Secretary of State's office. So that was a unique situation in terms of the anti-Aide Amendment. Unless there... Well, the last one was, the last one was the zoning Board of Appeals asking for some guidance on the general procedure for zoning amendment. That was welcomed also because, if you remember several years ago, the town went through a comprehensive zoning analysis with an outside consultant, which unfortunately went nowhere. It was totally reviewed, but maybe it was just too much change in the zoning bylaw, but it went nowhere. So since then, there have been selective changes, and the most compelling, the second time around, was, of course, the deletion of use variances in the bylaw, which never should have been there or should have been deleted many years earlier. But we gave some guidance to the zoning board in conjunction with the responsibilities they have, together with the planning board, to see that this process moves forward in good fashion to a review by town meeting as a legislative body. And the, I think the issue you're going to see coming from that is going to be, again, another controversial legal issue in zoning, prior existing non-conforming uses and structures, and the fact that right now, Southborough's zoning bylaw is not consistent with case law that interprets Chapter 40A, Section 6, particularly as it relates to structures that are single or two-family buildings. So I think that might be an ultimate potential zoning change that you may see. But as I've told them, you've got to make sure it is precise, clear. You've got to identify what your intent is so that you can be knowledgeable when you go to public hearing, and even more so when you go to town meeting. We did the, it was an honor to do the transfer of Fable Village Hall in late October. The transaction was a bit slow for permitting, but in the end, it all came off fine with restrictions of record and the reservation to still decide about parking. That's kind of special to me because when I was a five-year-old, I used to play around that area, and my great-grandmother used to be a nurse at the Village Hall sometime during the pandemic in 1917. So I'm glad that it's being preserved, and, boy, you can believe that I was very precise on what was expected when I said the selectmen expect this to be totally protected. And a little pushback, but in the end, it was agreed to. Thank you. And then, the St. Mark's Golf Course Conservation Restriction is probably going to be a historical thing for the next hundred years for the town. I note, by the way, a typographical error. We had two cases for Southborough. One was a Beals property issue on Oak Hill Road, B-I-E-L-S, and, of course, this is Beals, B-E-A-L-S. And the computer and the paralegal refused to put in B-E-A-L-S, so it was Beals. So that was a typographical, and we were sorry for that. But, you know, we had very little to do with that initially. That was an effort by, by, I think, a few selectmen, I think the town administrator, that got it to the point of a possible interaction between the prep school and the town, and that was historical from the get-go in terms of what was a try, everybody was trying to accomplish by special acts, by things that you couldn't do by the general laws, that you had to go to special act for. So that is going to be historical for the town, in my perspective, for years to come. And nothing to, all we did is legal. I mean, it was done by the town officials. And one of the smaller issues, but very important, was an affordable housing unit in Stockwell Lane, Stockwell Farms. And that particular project, which went back to 1997, as I said in the summary, that was the way you're supposed to integrate affordable housing into a residential project, which is you don't segregate it to the outside perimeters or make it look like different housing, but you integrate it into the middle of the project. And in this case, it was duplexes that are federally styled, no different than any other houses in the project. The only difference is it has one front door that opens up into two secondary doors that create the duplex. The issues were, however, at the time, they thought that was a wise decision in that sense, but they kind of missed, when I say missed, the applicant at the time, the developer, kind of missed some of the condominium requirements. And what we started to see was that it couldn't get refinanced for sale. And the reasons were that there were no budget, there were no common charges every month, there were no reserved funds. And we went through the condo docs with the co-owner of 16, I think, Aigs Stockwell, and their council, and we figured out with the great help of the Director of Finance, a way to get all of those things done so that when the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee decides, that will be available for resale under the affordable housing criteria to a qualified individual. And it's good to do that for that project because that is, in its own way, a very unique affordable housing layout. The only other one that I gave in the report, I found that this fascinating, the, it's a parcel of property that crosses the City of Framingham line. It's now, it's zero firm and ab. It's a U-Haul storage facility. But the planning board, in their foresight, made a condition that there be a restriction, a conservation restriction, on a portion of that land, and the applicant owners, Amerco, agreed to it. We reviewed an initial draft, and that is currently pending in the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. So that's the general report. I don't know if you have any questions about those.
Yeah, I do. A couple of, the, I guess it intersects the zoning Board of Appeals and the recent letter that you issued to the zoning Board of Appeals having to do with generating potential zoning changes.
Yes.
And there have been, over the course of the last two or three months, I've seen discussions at the planning board level where they've talked with representatives from the Economic Development Commission, and they're about who the initiator should be for zoning changes. And it was, I appreciate the letter. It was a little bit unclear to me about whether or not there is a required process for enacting zoning, proposed zoning changes involving the planning board and the zoning Board of Appeals, or whether or not there, it is, it's like any other article at town meeting and can be generated by, you know, another town board or committee or a citizen's petition or otherwise.
Okay.
How does that, how do those things interplay in your view?
The only, I went far beyond the technical legal requirement under Chapter 40A. I was trying to guide the two boards, which I was seeing weren't convinced as to which one should go forward. I think the ZBA was indicating that they felt that it would be somehow conflicting to propose the amendment, the zoning amendment, and they wanted the planning board to do it, and the planning board wanted them to become involved. So I made it clear that there is no conflict in terms of proposing a zoning change, and a zoning Board of Appeals and a planning board, both under the statute, can actually propose those zoning changes. It is the planning board that has to conduct the statutory public hearing to get the public input for the zoning change and subsequently make report to the town meeting as to their findings. So that's the only technical, real, legal requirement to get it in. There are other entities and petitioners that can propose or submit a zoning change under Chapter 40A. But this was a focus question about which one of us should do it and what is the general process. So much of that was more my experience, except for the statutory requirement I just mentioned.
But when does that statutory requirement kick in? In other words, whatever the board or, whether it's the zoning Board of Appeals, whether or not it's the EDC, whether or not it's a citizen group, whether or not it's the Board of Selectmen, decide that they are interested in a proposed zoning change, and they do whatever work is necessary, or someone does it on their behalf or otherwise. That then, by statute, goes to the planning board?
I would say that the normal process is you set the warrant, the Board of Selectmen set the warrant, the bylaw provision is created, and then, and I honestly don't know what the planning board does, but then it goes to a public hearing well before town meeting, and then a report is, public input, and then a report is made to the town meeting.
Okay. Let me just stop you right there. So if, however the proposal comes about.
Yes.
It is then required to go to, in other words, is the planning board then required to convene a public hearing on a, they are?
Yes. In that process, they, that's a statutory requirement. For whatever reason, planning board versus the zoning Board of Appeals in Massachusetts, they are the ones that conduct the public hearing and make the recommendation or report. Sometimes they don't make a report, but it is suggested by us that they do make a report, and that is the working area where the public at large gets a formal opportunity to speak to the changes, the amendment, whatever might occur, before it gets to the, for town meeting consideration.
Okay. And is there a, is the, does the statute require a time limit? In other words, whenever the proposal becomes formal, however it becomes formal, whether it's a proposed petition, warrant article, or otherwise, is there a time element then for the planning board?
There are, yeah, there is a time element where they have to conduct a public hearing offhand. I don't remember that.
Okay.
And then to submit the report. There is.
Okay.
But again, just, what I did is, I mean...
Oh, yeah. It's, what you did was a, was a bit of a trampoline for me, just because I've seen these issues percolating in other contexts. And it seemed to be unclear generally, and it was certainly unclear to me, exactly what the process is. So I appreciate that edification.
Yeah, it's hidden. It's hidden in the, in the, in the opinion. But most of it was because it is so difficult, because there are so many knowledgeable people, it's so difficult to get a zoning change in Southborough, you want to make sure that there is an abundance of public input, discussion, and knowledge before it ever gets to town meeting. Because if that's where the first real discussion is going to be had with a planning board public hearing that nobody attended, then it could be defeated from the get-go, or it can just simply be so confusing to people that they say, we don't, we don't understand it, we're not going to vote for it.
Okay. All right. Ms. Brosch.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to thank you for, I know the workshops that you do are done on your own time. The town isn't billed for them, so I wanted to thank you for that because it is truly beneficial, I think, to all the boards. As things come across through the course of the year and new members come on the board, it's a great forum for questions and comments to be asked, and I just wanted to thank you for doing it for the last two years, making sure that it was done. I know you did it years and years ago, I believe, as well, but for bringing it back and doing it again. Thank you.
Thank you. And there's really two reasons for that. One is kind of semi-selfish. It makes my job easier if town boards know what to do and what not to do. And secondly, when you're a citizen volunteer in your city or town, you're terrified because you don't understand the process you're in. So you try to help them understand what's expected of them and what their limitations are, and hopefully, it makes a better citizen volunteer. Thank you.
Good comment. Thank you, Mr. Cipriano. Very helpful to get an overview like this, and I would hope that we would do this periodically because it's good to sort of see what's out there and have an opportunity to ask questions if these things come up that are interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kalenda.
Counselor, thank you for that update. I just want to publicly thank you for your years of service to the town of Southborough. There's not many that I've run across, if anyone, that has the level of expertise you have in mass municipal law, our town bylaws, mass general laws, your ability to provide clear and concise updates to us. You have led this, you know, the board that I've been on the last almost nine years incredibly well in terms of legal services, you know, and I'll suggest that some of the things you mentioned in the, you know, the, you know, with the conservation restriction that is historic, with the work that is, had to be done on, you know, making sure that the public safety complex, we have got Main Street going on, we have some major issues that have been, that have come forward in front of the town and this board, and you have consistently guided us incredibly well. Some have suggested that we could readily and easily change out town council, wouldn't, we wouldn't miss a beat. I would caution anyone to think that, you know, we could take someone of your expertise and just, you know, place someone in the chair without, you know, significantly hampering our ability to conduct our duties here. You continue to lead this well. So I just want to publicly thank you for, I don't know how many years you've been doing it.
Here?
More than a few?
2002.
Unbelievable. Thank you, Counselor.
Well, thank you for that. And let me tell you, it is a great honor to represent not only the Board of Selectmen, but the town boards and officials. It really is a great honor because of the fact that my family came here so many years ago.
Your own history with the town.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's, that's, is that it? Is that the only questions? Okay. That was report one. Report two is, in effect, tax collection. And the tax collection report we're giving you, because it is now reactivated, we had had a tax collection issued just as Brian Ballantyne and myself had come into the town and realized that there was a substantial amount of uncollected taxes, you know, accruing interest, but uncollected. Towns or cities that do not aggressively attack tax collection suffer the effect upon the bond rating. And any auditor of a municipality will tell you that. The lower your outstanding tax collections are, presumably better your bond rating is. And the other reason is that the people of a municipality who pay on time expect a municipality to ensure that everyone else is paying like they have to because many struggle, even when they do pay. So this was that particular report. If you don't, I don't think there's a need to get into the substance of it, but the important thing is this. There are properties out there in the first round that were tax foreclosed, which means they are available for one or two reasons. One is to convert, well, three things. One is to convert it to municipal use, one is to let it sit with no purpose, and the third one is to send it back out to a public auction for resale to the public at large to recoup some, if not all, the tax money, and then put it back in the tax rolls. And my most recent experience in the last couple of weeks elsewhere is that people are willing to buy property in the towns of Massachusetts for beyond the tax amounts that are owed. And the statute tells us that if a municipality, unlike a mortgage foreclosure, if a municipality tax forecloses property and the bid is higher than the tax amount, then the differential received by the town is a windfall. It doesn't go back like it would have to on a mortgage foreclosure. It stays with the town. So there are properties out there that have been on the books for a while, three that I can think of that I mentioned, and it is the tax collector who is the custodian, but it is with the custodian, the Board of Selectmen, that decides what to do with these properties, whether to just let them sit, to evaluate them for municipal use, or to send them back out to a tax auction. There are maybe a few cases pending that we have in the second round, which will be the subject of that possibility, too. Others, people, you know, somebody dies in the family, the owners die, children move in, they don't know what to do, notice of tax demand is made, they immediately realize they've got to probate the property because they don't own it. They're living there, but they don't own it. So it generates getting these properties cured, not only for the town, but for a municipality, or rather, for a family in the municipality. So that's basically the tax report, the amount that was collected before is there. Brian Ballantyne and his staff are fully knowledgeable about what we need, and they constantly assist us in getting the things done so that we can proceed in land court.
Any questions on the tax report?
Quick question.
Sure.
It might be better for Mr. Ballantyne than you, but I'll give it a shot. The number at the end, that the amount that's been realized this year in delinquent tax payments is just north of $102,000?
That's what I would, that's the report I got.
Okay. Is that, how many of those are the result, if any, of foreclosure as opposed to other sort of collections means? Do you know?
A breakdown?
In other words...
I would say, yeah, I would say, this is all in this round, Brian. All right. In that, it's all in this round. We have not had to go to judgment of tax foreclosure yet. This has all been by...
In this fiscal year? Is that what this covers, this fiscal year or calendar year?
It, fiscal year.
This fiscal year. Okay.
So it, yeah, so, no, we, the first step, I mean, it should be public knowledge so that people are educated. First step is we set, well, first of all, the tax collector will send a demand, and if the demand is not met, then they will record a instrument of taking for tax title, which is, doesn't mean the property is owned by the town, but it means that it's subject to a tax lien. Subsequent to that, if we get it, we immediately send a final demand for tax payment, give them the amount, the per diem, a date certain when to pay, and tell them in as nice terms as we can that if they don't pay out, then we're going to be compelled to do something more to the property, which would include a foreclosure in land court. Or we also have devices where we can go to the courts of the Commonwealth Superior Court, District Court, and collect it just like a mortgage, a defaulted mortgage.
And so this $102,000 is representative of those sort of collection efforts rather than going, having to go to foreclosure?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we try to avoid.
No, I understand.
We don't want the properties. We just want payouts.
Okay. And is, in those instances, is all of that work done internal to the town? And by that, I mean town employees and/or town council, or do we sometimes have to use collection services or otherwise? All done internal?
No collection server. The only, the only out-of-pockets are fees for sheriffs or constables for service, and when needed, a qualified title examiner.
Okay. Great. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Ms. Brosch.
Thank you. In going through this process, has the town ever foreclosed, I'm assuming we have, it must have been on excess parcels and a lot of subdivisions, maybe, has the town, to your recollection, ever actually foreclosed on a property that had a home on it?
In Southborough? No.
Okay. And typically, when you go through this process, when somebody does eventually pay the back taxes, which I'm assuming either a bank or, you know, the homeowner does do, are your fees included in, so the town recoups that as well as the taxes?
Our history and advice is that they become a fee accrued to the account.
They do. Okay.
Now, I got to tell you that in saying that we haven't foreclosed, there are a few that are currently pending that are the subject of potential foreclosure. But I speculate, and one is actually in bankruptcy, which kind of blocks any ability for us to finish, and it's really not worth for us to go try to fight in bankruptcy, an issue, because what happens is... because what happens is bankruptcy court creates a pay plan, and the pay plan gets us, as a secured creditor, paid out. So again, it's all about really getting paid the money, not ending up with the property. But I do speculate that there could be one or two properties here in the current round that if things are not done quickly, and they know the need of doing that, then they could be the subject of a judgment of tax foreclosure.
Is it fair to assume in most cases, though, if it's a bank-owned property, you know, where there's a mortgage on it, that the banks are never going to let it, they're losing their asset by doing that?
I got to tell you, I'm going to tell you two things about that. One is that we, on occasion, check title, and we notify the bank that the borrower is in default of a mortgage covenant. Mortgage covenant is to keep your property taxes paid on time, compliance with zoning, insurance on the property, and make your mortgage payments on time. Forty percent of the time that we do that, the town gets a check from the bank to protect their asset. And I got to tell you, there's another twist, that sometimes their other properties owned, what we used to call Oriole properties years ago, and they, for some reason, some of these banks don't want to foreclose. They don't want to add it to, they don't want a mortgage foreclose, and they don't want to pay us out. They just want to kind of add it to the list of properties that need to be reworked. And I began to realize that, you know, why would they not simply pay us out or foreclose it? Or join us in foreclosure and then get it paid out completely? And there was a lot of resistance in some of the larger banks in the United States to do something like that. I don't know if you know any more about that, Marty, than I do.
Yeah, I think a lot of them were mortgage-backed securities, and we could trace back to 2008 for all of that stuff.
Okay.
So unfortunately.
So that was that. Okay. And then the last report is really just-
Hang on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Stiver.
One more question, please. Sidebar on that one, I used to be in the banking business. Banks really hate to run real estate businesses, so they don't want to own property. So they'll go to great lengths not to have to buy a property and manage it. I see, by my count, eight items on this list. Does this represent actions in process here? Does this represent everything that's out there now in terms of arrears? Or is there, are there, you know, 50 items that we just haven't gotten to yet in the process, or is this basically?
That's more you, because I only, I only address what I get.
Mount in the queue here. So in other words, is there, is there another $5 million out there that we may get to eventually, or is there a total of 10 grand?
No, there's, there's, there's a number of other properties, probably the total is between 40 and 50. Most of them are lower dollar amounts. So the total principal is probably between $275,000 and $300,000 principal that's out there.
Yep.
Do. There's a lot more money in interest and fees. But a lot of those properties are small enough where it's not, it's not worth it to involve town council sometimes until they continue to age out a little bit if they're a problem.
So this is most of the near-term opportunity here on this list?
Correct.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the last report?
And the last report is really just a general report on litigation. It's all pending, except for one case, which I tell you has finished after several appeals. I can talk about the timelines if you wish, or the interaction of the cases. Apart from the continuing issues with the so-called Park Central site, there's only one zoning appeal relative to the planning board's decision not to grant a special permit. And that is on the East Main Street property, and that is the subject of a land court case management conference tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock in Boston, which we will attend. And the other one is really the only tax valuation issue. And that is Walgreens seeking an abatement from the Board of Assessors. I've seen Walgreens elsewhere before. I know all the lawyers in this case. Respectfully to them, and that, the assessors acted correctly, and this case goes nowhere except to protect the values of the assessors that did the right job. So if you have any questions about the timelines on all that?
No.
And I believe that-
No, thank you very much.
Later on, you're going to be, I made a recommendation on a special counsel, and you have all that information, so you're good to go.
Appreciate that. I know when we had our goal-setting meeting earlier this year, one of the items that we discussed was having regular, about quarterly updates or so from you. And this is, I believe, the second one that we've had since that timeframe. So we appreciate you taking the time and filling us in on what's going on. Look forward to next report in another few months or so.
Anytime is needed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor.
Take care.
Next item, Ms. Cahill, interview for appointment to ZBA, alternate member term 6/30/20. Doris, if you want to come on up. Quick background, several of us had the pleasure of meeting with Ms. Cahill a couple of months ago. She's one of the people that had applied for the opening to the Assabett Regional School Committee position. Unfortunately, she was not selected for that, but she interviewed very well, and we all encouraged her to think of other opportunities to step forward, and she has submitted an application to fill one of the vacant alternate positions for the ZBA. And knowing that a couple of members were not able to attend the previous meeting and have not had the chance to meet with her yet, I thought it'd be good to have a few minutes just to talk with her and talk with her about her interest in the position. So I guess, Doris, if you just want to tell us a quick little bit about yourself and your interest in this position.
Okay. Chair Shea, thank you for having me. Hello, Lisa and Sam. We met a few months ago, and allow me to introduce myself a bit. So I'm a resident of Southborough. I've lived here, it's about 20 years now. And I've lived in the Boston area about 35 years. I grew up in Danbury, Connecticut, and I've raised my family here. They went through the school systems. I'm a certified public accountant professionally in both the states of Massachusetts and Connecticut. I primarily worked in Boston in my heat of my working career in public accounting, in corporate accounting. And then the last 15 years, I actually had a company, which I sold, I think it's eight years ago. I had that for about 15 years. My background in accounting, because people think tax, they certainly have all the public accounting, business, tax background, audit, tax, consulting, advisory services. But within that, I worked primarily for the architectural, engineering, and construction businesses. And as my career went forward, I specialized in job cost accounting, so in automated systems. Very exciting. So I was a job cost advisory accountant, and I worked and traveled throughout the United States through that career in that time period. From there, I transitioned. I was on a non-compete for a few years. But I continued to consult, and I consulted in a wide range of areas, although for some mom and pops, but for some mid-sized firms, small engineering firms, architectural firms, in a variety of capacities. And a lot of that relates to, I think it relates to this position, this alternate position. My last two years, I gave public service. I just returned from US Peace Corps, where I spent 27 months in economic development in a post-Soviet country, Georgia, where I worked in economic development for predominantly agriculture, agricultural businesses, agrotourism, hotel tourism, facilitating, not in such a leadership role that I was in my working career. Worked with a lot of poor people, and I enjoyed it, but I'm really glad to be home. I've been home for a while now. Another tidbit about myself is I come from an entrepreneurial family. My father passed, I think it's now seven, eight years, and I worked closely. I think I have a modest or reasonably decent understanding of rental property. My family has rental property. We have several buildings and the intricacies of surveying architectural plans and going before the ZBA to get a hardship. So I've had that, and I've done a number of build-outs in my own business in signing leases in the city of Boston. And I still consult very lightly, but not much. I was just reviewing a lease today. But I'd like you to ask me questions. That's, that's sort of a recap of who I am. But certainly, those who don't know me can take the time to ask away and get to know me.
Excellent. So just one point that I'll make quickly, and I forwarded an email. Mr. Nicholson from the ZBA had an opportunity to speak with you about your interest in the position, and he has forwarded along his endorsement for your appointment as well. With that, I will open it up to questions. Mr. Healy?
Sure. First of all, thank you very much for your interest in volunteering and serving for the town. And also, I'd like to talk, I won't do it now, but it sounds like an interesting adventure over in Georgia. But let's talk about zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you, thank you. Service is important.
Yeah, a lot of different things you could be, you know, interested in in volunteering for the town, particularly given your background. What is it about the zoning Board of Appeals that sort of caught your interest?
Well, I like detail. I have a detail, and I wouldn't mind reading code to help me, when I would get up for vote, to be able to apply that skill. So I actually think I could take my tax background or my code background and my, what was I, my skills in that area. So I like that aspect of it. Also, I really do enjoy building and property management. That's why I was working side by side with those kinds of businesses for many years.
Have you had an opportunity to go to some zoning Board of Appeals meetings or to watch them on television?
Well, I've certainly gone to zoning Board of Appeals meetings. I tried to go to the one in November here. I did not. But I've been to many in the town that I grew up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a particular view about the general role of a member of the zoning Board of Appeals? Guiding principles, flexibility, inflexibility, things like that? Have you thought about that at all?
Yeah, I actually do think about things like that. I believe in economic development, I guess, is, I believe in economic development would be something to state. And being part of that, let me, why don't you ask that question to me just a little bit differently, if you don't mind? I go down the right path with that.
Do you want me to ask it differently?
Yeah, just ask it differently, yeah.
I thought I was asking questions. No, 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 I'm just kidding. I'm just curious as to how you would approach issues as a member of the zoning Board of Appeals? And what you just said in terms of being driven by considerations about economic development?
Right, okay, okay. So maybe I work best if I give an example.
Okay.
If the property is 100 years old, I have an understanding of property is very old, maybe very close to a busy road. And that may involve permitting and being next to somebody else. And I think I could judge that fairly well.
Okay.
Fairly well. So there's just so many variants. We'll take something simple like a fence. Someone wants to put a fence in their yard. You know, I think I have a good understanding of offset and getting compromised, if they could get a use to put a fence up. Or if they want to put a porch on the front of their house, but they need to take down the porch, how that else may impact the property. What if it's too close to the neighbor? I would think I could understand that, you know, well enough that to be able to build the porch would be an answer to it. One, they need the porch, porch is falling off. But two, that, what's the right decision according to the code? And being flexible in that regard, so that, one, they get their porch, and, two, we have happy neighbor, you know, both. So we need the porch. We don't want to have a dilapidating building, maybe. So I do have some positioned views on those things. So that's what I mean by economic development. Would you want to use everything not looking good?
All right. And finally, you seem like someone who's pretty easy to get along with.
I think I really am.
Yeah, I get that sense. But I'm just, have you had experience working on, obviously, something like a zoning Board of Appeals? There's a collaborative aspect to it. Have you had, in your professional life or in previous volunteer opportunities, worked on committees, boards, et cetera, that gives you some experience and background in that?
Right, right. So in my professional career, I ran an advisory user group to a very large software company, two large software companies. One was a division of Intuit, and another was a part of Dell Tech, which is a very industry-specific software for engineering and architectural. And there was a division of Intuit. So I've done it in my professional career where you're not running the show. You need to collaborate. Also, the project work, I mean, there's 20 or 30 people on a team, and you need to be able to collaborate. I'm not, could not possibly make all the decisions and with all the change orders to get to an end of a modest-sized project. In my volunteer, I was so not in control of anything overseas, I found it a really enriching experience. I was more facilitative, and I have to sustain a project versus run a project. So you're not calling the shots at all. You're just trying to get cooperation and adaptation of Western ideas and develop, or access to money would be another example. So I think I, I think I'm good that way.
All right, terrific. Well, I appreciate your time and appreciate your interest in, as I said, volunteering to serve the town.
This is exciting.
It's always nice to see.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm energetic, that's for sure.
Ms. Broschel.
Thank you again for stepping forward. It's a pleasure to see you again. I'm so glad that you did volunteer again. I think your skill set is something that's going to be such an asset to the town. I think this is a really good opportunity and position for you. I think attention to detail, which is something a CPA and an accountant has to do. I think this is right in your wheelhouse. I have every faith that through time you will learn everything that you need to learn to get this done. So again, thank you for stepping forward, and I think you'd be great for this.
I would just like to thank Katie. Katie gave me a sense that I'm going to be supported, and so did Craig Nicholson, to have access to the code, that I'll be getting the applications. So I think I've got the right expectation. I'll see the applications, but not necessarily vote and get the leg up I'm going to need to see how it goes over the next year. So I really appreciate everyone's time, especially seeing me again.
Thank you.
That's it?
Other questions?
Ms. Cahill, good evening. Thank you also for stepping forward to volunteer for your town. Sometimes it can be rewarding. Sometimes it can be quite challenging. So the zoning Board of Appeals has had its own recent history of very difficult issues that they have had to deal with. And at times, this room may be packed with people who want one thing or another. How would you, how do you handle if you've got, you know, strong advocates at that microphone demanding you do X? You know, or advocating loudly and vociferously that you do exactly what they want to do? How do you handle that? Is that, do you have a tendency to, do you hear everyone in the room and say, I'm going with that? Do you then take it back and take that as well as your own research under advisement? You know, how do you handle what could be very challenging situations at times?
I think business is contentious. I think people are sensitive. I think they need to be listened to. But ultimately, I would probably gather all the information and make what I thought was the best decision. And I would sleep probably well at night. I don't rattle easily, and I don't get put under pressure. It's a nature of being trained, possibly as a CPA, or maybe I'm just like that as a person individually. I like respect. I think I haven't had a lot of difficulty, but now this is a public hearing. So anybody can give their opinion and put me under pressure, I suppose. But I would consider myself almost always independent and free-thinking in that regard. I just do.
Good to hear.
But I know there's problems, but I've been a little removed, which is luckily, I'm a little removed being overseas. But that's in court or something.
Okay. There have been members of the ZBA or any board or committee that are considered one, on one side or the other. You know, for instance, on the ZBA, you know, you know, very strong pro-business, pro-development, very strong, you know, no development, open space, let's not, let's not approve variances. You know, they should be rare, if ever. Where do you, where do you fall?
Where I fall is things naturally don't go on a straight line to get to the end of any project. There's just going to be changes and difficulties, because things change. They just naturally change. change. They just naturally change. I wouldn't say I'm in the middle, but I would also not say that I'm not entrepreneurial. You know, I'm not, I'm not totally, I am conservative fiscally, to, I can say that pretty, pretty, pretty fairly. So, I'm a fiscal conservative, but I am also pro-economic development with a, with a proper sense of value to history and to all the things that also need to meet the needs. I'm not so left or so right. And no one's ever really asked me that a lot, because I'm, I'm not so left or so right that I would fall off a cliff taking a position. I'm going to get consensus, or if we're going to have consensus, it would be a rare occasion, I'd get in an argument with someone, or like, put them, even someone who was yelling, because they, they have their opinion. I think people should have their opinion.
Yep. Good mindset to have. Thank you, Ms. Cahill.
Yep.
Mr. Stivers?
I'll echo my thanks for applying to this. You made a great case for the Assabett position, and I'm delighted to see you here again. As, I guess, the member who has served on the ZBA and spent seven years there, I think I've got a pretty good feel for the requirements of the job. And I think you've got the background that actually could be a good fit there. So, I'm delighted to, to have you apply. I do have one question. One of the issues that comes up frequently in permitting boards, in ZBA particularly, is conflict of interest. Do you have any conflicts in terms of your business or personal relationships that would affect in any significant way your ability to be objective with ZBA applications?
If I were, had a conflict, I have some land ownership in town. I'd probably have to recuse myself, which would be a no-brainer. I have an ethical standard that I have to meet to maintain my licensing as a CPA.
But no business relationships that come to mind?
I don't believe I have any business relationships, but if I did have a business relationship, I don't have any financial relationships or business dealings, actually, or even clients. My clients were mostly inter, you know, national and in Boston. And if there was, I would just recuse myself. And I would know immediately because of that.
Thank you.
So, I would know that.
That's my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion? Mr. Stivers?
Move that we appoint Doris Cahill to the ZBA alternate position, term to expire at 6/30/20. Is that current one?
Correct. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who's seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
See you next, I think we meet next month.
It's worn in first, though.
Uh, next.
Are they taped?
It is.
Next item, Mr. Ballantyne, FY 2021 budget update.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm just going to make a couple of comments while Brian comes up and gets himself settled. You have in front of you hard copies of all of the budget submittals from the departments, as well as some cover sheets, which give you some, some roll-ups of the budgets, the recap sheet, some of the capital, as well as some of the new positions. This is all sent to you previously, but I figured you might like to have hard copies in front of you this evening, in case there was something you want to look at. I know some of you like the computers more than the hard stuff, but I figured I'd give you the option. The present budget, as we sit here today, based on current revenue projections, departmental requests, is about a 5.69% increase over fiscal 2020, the year we're currently in now. I, if you told me that number is acceptable, then I think we're done. But I don't think you're going to tell me it's acceptable, and I would suggest that it should be. So, we'll continue. The budget that you have in front of you, as it stands, is using just over $1 million in excess levy capacity, which is, is obviously unsustainable. The, the value of the new hours and positions requested exceeds the estimated new growth for fiscal '21, which is unsustainable. If you recall, in fiscal 2019, in the budget book, the budget was increasing 3.82%. We added 1.6 full-time equivalent positions. Mr. Ballantyne and I cautioned the town against adding new positions and hours based on OPEB retirement costs and the ability to sustain those moving forward, because there is a difference in adding something into your operational budget, which is going to continue on your base year after year after year, that a one-time capital expense, and those items, you know, come and go, and they, they fluctuate in size and in cost. If you were to simply look at a budget increase, a budget for the current positions and programs with contractual increases and replacement equipment inside of it, that budget number and that budget increase would be 3.38% over what we are currently seeing now in fiscal '20. So, it would be 3.38% higher than it is now for next fiscal year. Therefore, the new request totaled about 2.31%, which is just about $925,000, if Mr. Ballantyne's math is correct. When we meet with the departments and we look at everything, I will tell you that the departments work very hard in putting their budgets together. I really think they come in with honest budgets, and they come in with honest needs, and things that they'd like to undertake to improve the service for, for the residents and for the community. In a vacuum, they all make sense. When you put everything together, it is not sustainable, and does not fit within the annual three to three and a half increase range that the board has, I think, informally been, been holding to for the annual tax increase for the last several years. So, this is why we're looking to get your input tonight, as we try to finalize the budget. I hate to say this, but, you know, within the next 60 days or so, we need to post this warrant, which means we need to have this budget done. Advisory has continued to do their work in meeting with the departments, and I'd like to, you know, try to identify where this board is, and getting a sense of where advisory may be, and then trying to work on the collaborative process, so that we can have a, a uniform budget going into town meeting. So, we're not necessarily looking for votes this evening, but I think there would be some sentiments of things that you would like to see in the budget. There are things that you would, you know, would like not to be included in the '21 budget, and there may be some items you need more information on. That's the kind of direction we're seeking tonight. Just a couple of quick updates. On the fiscal 2021 budget, Mr. Ballantyne and I continue to have meetings and discussions on a lot of these numbers. Just one note, the Worcester County Retirement Meeting, where we get our retirement assessment number, is January 23, I believe, near the end of the month. That's usually an interesting number for us. Brian usually nails it pretty close. Last year, we were a little bit off. It was a little more than we thought it was going to be. So, that's always kind of the last surprise that comes into the budget process. We had a meeting with Superintendent Hool over at Assabett, talking about their assessment number. It's going up approximately 24% from last year. That's the preliminary estimate. It's about $75,000 in terms of money. We have two new students, and a lot of the increase in the assessments for the member communities is a decrease in the non-member revenue that they're seeing over there, with some of the towns deciding to send their students elsewhere for vocational education. We do have in the budget one Norfolk student in transportation. That's about $42,000. We haven't had one since 2010, but we do put it in the beginning of the budget process, and then we decide, when we get a little later in the process, whether we want to take that out and assume that we are not going to have a student. However, we don't get that information until probably sometime in January, to get a little more certainty on whether we should be leaving that in or not. We may see some savings from our health insurance with the rates. Mr. Ballantyne continues to put pressure on our health advisors, given our good experience ratings. So, hopefully, we'll see a little bit, a little bit of good news there. I will say that we had better news than we normally do to start our budget process on health insurance. So, the numbers that we were carrying were a little lower than we usually do. We usually carry somewhere around a 7% or 8% increase. This year, we started with a 5. We do expect that to go down still, but we're not going to get the big, you know, the savings that we would anticipate if the number we were carrying were higher. Preliminary information on the K-8 budget, they do have some impacts over there from special education costs. That is going to impact their increase. Still believe it's going to be, you know, within that 3.5% to 4% increase for the schools. And this year, again, the regional assessment is still favoring South Borough, as North Borough continues to see higher enrollment numbers, and therefore is bearing a bigger portion of the assessment. So, that is, usually tends to be good information for us, even though we do have, you know, a higher wealth factor, which is factored into the, to the calculations. Two other pieces, we're not anticipating, you know, any change, very little change of state aid for fiscal '21, given the history. Usually, a 1% or 2% increase in local aid for the town is taken away on the back end by the charges that the state assesses to us. Last year, I think, you know, was it 2%? Brian only equated to like a $30,000, you know, increase. But once you took the charges away, or added the charges in, and the increased charges, we only got like 800 bucks. So, you know, not a lot to crow about, you know, when, when it's a 1% or 2% increase. Local receipts, you know, we're not looking at any change right now. We may review those again one more time, but we did make some adjustments to those when we looked at the bonding for the public safety facility. I don't think that we should be looking to further adjust those up at this point. And free cash for fiscal '21 was a little bit higher than it normally is. There was some one-time expenses, or some one-time revenue that was received in there, and we would anticipate that fiscal '22 is likely going to be lower. If you recall the discussion with the auditors that were here at the last meeting, they did talk a little bit about the monies that are turned back for expenses, the revenues that are received. The percentages are pretty tight. Our budgets are running pretty lean, and I don't think there's a department that won't get up and tell you that they're running their budgets pretty tight. There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of cushion in those budgets, which I think is one of the reasons why we worked with advisory to increase the reserve fund, just to ensure that if something goes sideways, we do have money, you know, we do have a place to go that isn't going to require us to go back to town meeting. So, that was my brief comment, and I will, I don't know if Mr. Ballantyne has any, anything to add on?
That was actually very good by the town administrator, very concise. So, I don't have a whole lot to add to that. I think that the main point of us coming here tonight to see the board is to really look at that list of new initiatives, and perhaps get some feedback on that, and what the board may either be able to decide tonight, that they could not recommend, or if there are items they could recommend. Either or. And maybe the list won't be complete tonight. Maybe the, the board will need to do some further research, or have us do some further research on some of these items. But that would at least start us getting down the path to narrowing the budget down a little bit. We'll, of course, come back, you know, anywhere from a few weeks to a month to get the budget much more narrowed down at that point, and voted on hopefully very soon. It's not all bad. If you recall, last year, we, we started the budget, I think it was like some ridiculous number of 11% or maybe a little higher than that at the beginning. So, this doesn't seem quite as daunting, although, that being said, I think the town administrator and his warning, not-so-subtle warning maybe, is correct, that it's sort of, we're in a good financial position. That, last year, we ended up pretty, you know, fairly well. Our levy capacity is good at the moment. However, it's sort of fragile. So, we, we want to be very careful on, you know, heading into the next one to three years, that, because as the town administrator mentioned, that levy capacity dropping $1 million is, is large money. And that indicates that we're eating up our, you know, taxing ability. And again, to remind the board and to the public, once we hit that levy limit, which we were at years ago, the buck stops, unless you go to town meeting and really make a good case to get their permission to have an override, which no one enjoys doing. So, I, I think we're just opening up to comments on, if there's any kind of feedback you want to give us on the suggestions so far from departments and...
Thank you very much. I'll start with one quick question on the recap sheet.
Sure.
Revenues, can you talk about the big drop in anticipated revenues for the community preservation funds?
Yes, we don't put those in till the end, when they firm up their projects. So, it looks a little odd right now. It doesn't really matter as far as the bottom line, because money comes out and goes out CPC one-on-one. Not, with the town accounts office, doesn't quite work that way, but with the budget, it does. So, we appropriate the money. The money's already there. There's no budgetary effect.
Okay.
So, that, that looks odd right now, only because the projects, we haven't put in their full list this year of what they're going to be. It'll go up.
So, when that number is increased, you'll see the increase in then in capital articles, or is it in budget articles?
Yeah, you'll see it in the other. That's, that's in the other item. So, you'll see both rise at the same dollar-for-dollar level.
Oh, so that's why the other, on the expenditures, is such a dramatic increase.
Now, the other does have some other miscellaneous things, and you bring up a point of other funding sources. So, last year, we had about a half a million, maybe a little more, of other funding sources, which is water, indirect costs, CPC, and includes things like premium money, transfers from other accounts, all these odd things, trust fund money, septic money to offset the budget, that pretty much in some way offsets the budget. And that dropped this year by, by 400,000 to 500,000. Ambulance fund was a big reason. We usually use the ambulance fund for all the fire capital, and a little bit to offset the regular town budget, in theory, the fire department budget. However, the ambulance fund was running a little low this year. So, we are rebuilding that back up, and based on Chief Achilles and raising the rates there, we think next year will be much, much more favorable.
Okay. And one other question, I assume that OPEB contribution is included?
Yes, it is.
And where, what's mine would that be on the?
That would be under the benefits budget. So, that is under there for 250,000, again.
So, it's the same amount?
Same amount.
It has not increased, recognizing the potential for additional positions?
Correct, correct.
So, rather than place it out on a separate article every year to be voted upon, or to essentially have it be something put on the chopping block in order to save a position or a piece of equipment or things of that nature, it is built into the budget within the benefits, $250,000 annually?
Okay. All right. Other questions, Mr. Healy?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Ms. Broschel?
Thank you. I actually had the opportunity, and I want to thank Mark and Brian for spending quite a bit of time with me and trying to answer some of the questions I had. One of the first things that jumped out at me when I, when I went over this budget was the departments that are looking to add full-time and part-time hours. It totals out to $457,000, which is just about a 1% increase in taxes alone. I also had the concern whether this is sustainable. I think as we go through this budget season, we really need to take a look at how we want to approach this. I kind of went through all the line items as well. That's my biggest concern in, in looking at the budget is, is the size of the increase, and that's not to say that there's not a need, that departments don't have a need, but I think we need to be very careful and very fiscally responsible, with the growth only being $450,000, the new, the new growth projected for next year at that. I also have a few questions. I see Mr. Parent is here, if he wouldn't mind coming up for just a second.
Don't.
So, I briefly mentioned this to John, is in, in other, other operations support, Budget 159, there was a $100,000 increase, and it seemed to be for the public safety building. So, I had asked what the prior year was, and I think it was roughly $50,000 combined, John?
Did a quick analysis today for you. Basically, if you take the combined gross square footage of the former police and fire station, that was about 39,400, 500 square feet. Now, the new public, sorry, 16,306 square feet. The new public safety building is 39,495 square feet. That is about a 2.42% multiplier. So, you're talking well over double the size. Now, if we took the FY '19 fuel cost, that's heating, propane, oil, electricity for the former fire and police stations, that came to $48,313, basically. Now, if you extrapolate that out with that multiplier of 2.42, that equates out to 1.2. out to one point, sorry, hundred and seven thousand, twenty-one dollars. Sorry, gonna have to put my glasses on. They're not helping up close tonight. That's about two dollars and ninety-six cents a square foot, basically, to, for utilities for the former stations. Now, the numbers we are using to budget for the new public safety complex, they were provided to the town from an engineering firm. This was back in September of two thousand seventeen. So, we took the numbers that they provided us with, and we had to use an escalator in there. I think we put in a ten percent, which is pretty darn conservative. And that actually comes out to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. Now, that's about three dollars and fifty cents a square foot. Now, everyone instantly says, but it's a new building, issue caught less to run. Unfortunately, the devil is in the details with new buildings. When you have an energy-efficient building such as the public safety complex, you have a pretty tightly sealed envelope. Now, in this particular building, with the air conditioning and heating systems we use, you can't open windows. So, you have to have fresh air makeup at all times. There is a very large system on the roof that must run twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five, pretty much. If we were to open windows during an air conditioning season, water will start dripping from the system. This is, it's a very high-tech system. I feel it's going to be a very good system. But the system itself, it does cost to run, and with new building codes, you must meet requirements. And this building is a well-built building that meets building requirements.
Okay. That, that was kind of the answer you gave me, but I just thought it was important to bring up, because again, it was, it was such a large jump from the prior year, and I'm sure that somebody will ask that question as well, so it's always good to be ahead.
Understandably.
So, thank you, John, I appreciate that.
You are most welcome.
Um, Brian, could you just touch on briefly, under the assessor's budget, under management consulting, it went up seventy-point-six percent. I know it has to do with a state mandate to reevaluate, but could you just touch on that briefly?
Right, it was a new, it was a new mandate issued by the DOR on communities, which they're about a third, that are in reval years, which of course, as I mentioned here, we're, the town of Southborough is in a reval year, so it affects us. It's a mandate to do certain valuation, it's a certain valuation project on utilities, like National Grid and certain things like that. So, the only way the assessor's office could accommodate it was to budget for additional consulting monies for that project. There's no choice, they didn't give us an option. We, we called them and followed up and confirmed that we're going to be subject to that.
Okay. I mean, I understand it's...
In theory, by the way, that, just to add on that, and I may have talked to you about that also, the, the new valuations may pay for themselves in a roundabout way, because we're assuming they're going to go up. That's, of course, if they don't appeal to the ATB and...
Right, I mean, anytime I see a jump in a budget that high, it's always worth asking.
Yeah, it just looks weird, yeah.
Okay. Do you have any backup on 154 Municipal Technology Committee? They're asking for a budget from a thousand to two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four. Do you know what the justification for that jump is? Did they give you any when they did the budget request?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ballantyne, I'm only thinking of town.
Yeah, it went up a hundred and ninety-six percent, so...
Yeah, no, I, I, I did get that from the chair. I did not get further information on that, unfortunately. I, I did ask.
Okay. And, um, that goes with that, that's fine. Mark, you had mentioned on the under personnel board for the fifty-two thousand for consulting and professional services, six, hundred and six percent increase. Can you just briefly touch on what that's for?
Sure. So, I believe it's every four years, looking at Mrs. Hale, just to make sure, so every four years, the personnel board does a review, and has a study conducted on the pay and classification study. And, and so this money was put in because, you know, they were looking at this and saying it's time to do this again. I believe the discussion that is being had by the personnel board now is it may be a year early, and this is something that may be able to be held off until twenty-two. So, I don't want to commit to anything, but that number may be going down, not disappearing completely, but there may be, you know, a reduction in that, and you'll see that uptick coming in twenty-two and not twenty-one.
Okay. 175 Planning Board. There's two line items for minutes for master plan and SHOPC. I'm a little concerned about this. I, I understand minutes for permitting boards and such, but I think we need to be careful in questioning this, because what's to say, all the other boards don't say, well, they're getting their minutes taken, our job is just as important, and are we setting a precedent going across the board that minutes will be taken by a recording secretary versus the way that it's been done in the past for all of the boards? So, that's, that's just a comment for this board to ponder, and maybe it's not a big deal, and maybe it's a case-by-case basis, and, and so be it, but I wouldn't be doing a service if I didn't bring it up.
I, I think Mr. Ballantyne will tell you, this is not a out-of-the-buck, or, you know, out-of-the-ordinary request. We're seeing more and more of these that are looking for minute services.
Yeah.
Quite frankly, as long as they don't want Katie, I'm fine. You know, because she's going nowhere. It's, it's very difficult to find somebody who does your minutes and does them well. And, you know, and I know that a lot of these boards and committees are looking for these type of things, and I think that when we review these budgets, we do tend to have a little bit of sympathy for some of those departments that are single employees, that are staffing these boards, that are acting as the professional, as well as trying to take minutes while they're trying to provide professional services and advice to their board or committee, so...
No, and I, I understand there's an offset. My only concern is that if every board and committee came forward and asked for this, that's a lot of committees, and it's a lot of money at eighteen hundred dollars a year.
It is.
So, I just, again, as I nitpick through the numbers, that's one of the things that jumped out at me, that I wonder if it's a needed service, or it's just something we want, because everybody has wants, you know, of what we'd like to see in the budget, so... And again, it's thirty-six hundred dollars, in the scheme of things, to some people, it's probably not a big deal, but it is, if there's going to be more coming forward and asking for it, and at what point do we draw the line, and what's our process going to be on that, so...
Sam does a great job at minutes. I know he's done minutes in the past.
He has, he has. Exactly. Sam, you could volunteer for, do all the minutes for everybody.
We can bump your selectmen stipend if you'd like.
Can I make a motion to that effect? Um, and, let's see, I think that those were some of my main questions as I went through, and, you know, again, I go back to the departments that are looking to add the hours and the dollar figure that's attached to that, and it's, it's not that everyone can come forward and tell us why they have a need, and, and they are probably amazing needs, and they're probably boards and committees or departments that have been understaffed in the past. I understand it, but it just, we're still feeling the effects of the public safety building on the budget, and now we're looking at adding potentially an extra percent for part-time. And I will say, most of these positions are part-time, so there isn't OPEB or anything attached to them, benefits attached to them, so that I appreciate. But I, again, I just think, I don't know where advisory stands on this, I would be interested to hear, in looking at some of these, and I guess that's it for me.
Other questions, comments?
Marty, please, feel free.
A, a number of things. Brian, thanks, and, and Mark, thanks for the, the work on this. It's, it's, it's very helpful, but like everything else, it's, it's, you can, you can get lost in the morass, so I want to try to clear some things up, at least in my mind. Not in any particular order, although I'm, I am going to get back to the, to the positions. But just first of all, on the, the Algonquin, the one-point-seven-five percent, this might be a question better put to the regional school committee, and maybe the Southborough School Committee as well. But do you know what the, what the overall Algonquin budget increases? And the reason I ask is because it, it can be a little bit deceptive if your budget is only going up one-point-seven-five percent in one year, but you've got a balloon of students coming in the eighth grade, and you've, you've sort of adopted a, a much larger increase than one-point-seven-five percent, and your rate is going to go up because of that. Do you have a sense for how much overall the Algonquin budget is, is projected right now?
I can, well, you can almost extrapolate it. The Northborough side is, I believe, and the town administrator can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's probably eight, eight-ish percent was the estimate, I think. So, based on that, you're probably up about five, six percent overall.
Okay.
So, we're really on the, the, the nice end this year.
Okay. And I'm guessing you're not...
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, so all I was going to say is, so really, so what's been happening the past couple of years, because the enrollment is so out of balance, and Northborough's carrying so many of the students, is that there, say it's a, it's a five or six percent increase overall for the Algonquin budget, Northborough is going to work with the superintendent to get that number down as low as they can.
Oh, I know, I understand that.
When that number, yeah, exactly, right?
I've had experience with that.
Would do the same thing on this side, right? So, if, so, any, you know, anything that they can bring the number down to make it more palatable for Northborough is simply going to have an increased effect on our, so our number would likely be lower, obviously, than what Northborough's assessment would be based on enrollment. So, anything they get their number down to be palatable means ours is going to drop even further.
Even more.
Right. So, you know, I, I would say, you know, a, you know, potentially, you know, one percent increase, you know, between one and two percent increase for us, maybe at the end of the day for an Algonquin budget. The initial discussions with the superintendent, he's hoping that overall, between the K to eight and the Algonquin budget, the assessment, you know, we're looking somewhere in that three to three and a half increase for the schools, which, again, is extremely collaborative, you know, and, and it's been that way, you know, for the past, you know, seven budgets that we've done.
Okay. And I'm guessing, again, that you don't have at hand the, the, the numbers, in other words, what, what our, what our trend is? As I said, we can go up one-point-five percent or one-point-seven-five percent for Algonquin this year, but if we got a big eighth grade class coming the year after, we've sort of bought into that much larger budget increase.
I won't get too much into it, because I don't want to trip over myself, however, I will say from what I've read that I think the trend is, at least in the short term, going to continue or stay in our favor.
Even or go down.
It's either going to stay the same or in our, it's going to be relatively, you know...
Yeah, the projections are pretty flat. Wheels aren't coming back around yet.
Yeah, we're not, we're not due to go up.
Yeah, okay.
At least in the near term, is from what I've read.
Okay. In terms of the, right now, and this is, this is, this is thirty thousand feet, you've got the projected increase at five-point-six-nine, and, and Mark, I think you said that without any new positions or part-time hours, it would be three-point-three-eight?
That's correct.
Is that, is that correct? So, what does that translate into in dollars? Is that the, is that the...
The nine-hundred thousand?
Well, see, I, I see the four-ninety.
Yes, it would be about nine-hundred thousand, yes.
Where does the, where is the nine-hundred thousand? Is that, is that on a...
So, just for, so just for equating purposes, a one percent increase on the tax rate is about four hundred thousand dollars in expenses in here. So, if you reduce this budget by four hundred thousand dollars, that five-point-six-nine comes down to four-point-six-nine.
Right.
Okay?
But you don't see that, I think you're, you're asking is where is that documented? You don't see that, because we just ran that estimate today and took out some of the capital that was, you know, that was not, was new capital.
Okay, that's what, that's exactly what I was looking for.
We didn't, we didn't put that to papers.
That's okay.
Yeah, that was more of a thing we ran today and said, if we did this, would it be?
So, you're trying to tie out that four-ninety number at the bottom there to this nine-hundred and...
I'm trying to tie, tie out what the number is that, that, that goes from five-point-six-nine percent to three-point-three-eight percent.
Got it, okay.
What, what goes into that?
How's that made up? Yep.
And, and that exists somewhere, but not in my packet?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. But that's obviously something you can send out to us, because I'm...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
But again, just so I'm clear, it's, so it's the four-ninety in the positions plus some capital?
Plus some capital, yeah, correct, yes.
In terms of the new, the proposed position, is there a triage that goes on at your and Mark, your and Brian's level, or Brian, your and Mark's level? In other words, are there other departments that proposed, suggested, recommended, whatever the right term is, for additional positions, and those have been triaged out? And if they were, how do they, how are they out and others are in? Or maybe that didn't happen?
So, this is, I, I think, you know, what you've been seeing the past several years has been the unvarnished version. You know, this is, this is what people are giving us, this is what people are looking for. In the past, I think that the board has kind of wanted us to filter that out and filter some of those things out. You know, we do have conversations with departments as to, you know, what seems to make sense, but quite honestly, we've been doing this long enough, the team's been together long enough, they're not going to come in and, and BS us. They know the stuff that we're not just going to put in just to kind of distract you over here, so you're not looking at, you know, what I'm saying is...
I'm just looking at purely from a, purely, purely from a, from a, from a, you know, a ledger stamp.
Yes.
Were there others that were proposed that weren't?
No, no.
Okay, these are the only that were proposed?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And of those, if it says in the, again, now I'm looking at the sheet with the four-ninety, is my assumption correct that any time there's a parenthetical with PT, that, that is, obviously that stands for part-time?
Yes.
But that is sufficiently part-time that it doesn't implicate additional costs beyond salary?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So, is there, and, and again, I can do the math myself, but I'm just wondering if you've already done it for me. Is there a, what is the number, if, if you just look at the, the proposed full-time positions? What is the cost associated with that?
Uh, it'd be about three, three, three hundred thousand, somewhere right around there, maybe slightly north of that, but yeah.
Sixty percent, sixty percent of the four-ninety ballpark?
Yes.
Okay. And that is...
That would be the departments of fire, police, treasure, that's it?
That's it.
So, four positions?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um... And in terms of the, the new growth estimate is from the assessor's office?
Yes.
That's a pretty, I, I, Paul has, in the past, always been, in other words, how solid is the four-fifty on the, on the, is it in fact an absolute ceiling, or is that a floor? Or do you know?
Well, I would say he's, he usually sets it up so that it's fairly certain we'll attain that, I will say that.
Okay, so it's at least a floor.
It probably could go up a little. I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't anticipate it, like, he's had a few years where he's been surprised himself a little bit because of the personal property side and the, the commercial side, that's, at the end of the year, you can't always tell that until you get later in the year. And he gets some of the personal property from the state, which doesn't come out until we're past budget.
Yep.
So, there is always the potential for that, but I think if I had to, from what I've gathered with our talks with him, that, you know, he's probably, if it is going to be higher, five hundred, five-fifty, maybe six. You're not talking, I'm, you know, you won't see one-point-five million.
Okay.
Let's put it that way.
No, I'm just seeing, trying to get a sense for what sort of potential flexibility it might be on the revenue side.
A little conservative, but not, right, but not crazy.
In terms of the part-time positions, has there been any discussion with the various departments that are requesting it, or thought at your level about whether or not there is a way to that? I don't want to say it's a wish list, but that's there. In other words, the departments don't get together and, and, and come in with an integrated approach for potential positions. Do you know if there's been any discussion, obviously you'd know at your level, but particularly at the department level, about whether or not there's a way to spread out those part-time hours, so that maybe, you know, Department A doesn't get everything it wants, and Department B doesn't get everything it wants, but they, they are able to split that? Is that, is that a possibility for those part-time positions?
So, we've taken a look, it's funny, we do this an awful lot in, in trying to whiteboard some of this stuff and saying, does it make sense for us to have a full-time shared position? You know, instead of all these part-time positions, do we want to look at something like this? But it's, it's kind of difficult combining a youth and family position with a technology position. You know, there's not, there's not a lot of synergy there. You know, we do have a couple right now, the assessor's office and the board of health office have shared a position for a number of years, and you get the right person in there, and it works. You know, we've done it also with the, the board of health and the council on aging. We've shared the nurse, we've shared a nurse position. But there's nothing, there's nothing here that we've been able to kind of put together that makes sense at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, we've tried it a number of different ways, you know, I, I always thought, well, could youth and family rec share? Not that rec was asking, but, you know, in, in a theory, because they're at the same Not that rec was asking, but, you know, in, in a theory, 'cause they're at the same location, or youth and family and council on aging. 'Cause they're, do some of the same sort of basic things, um, even though they're different, uh, generational levels. But, um, like, like the town administrator says, it's, it's, it's a little bit, um, complex in certain ways, too. So, we do look at it.
Okay, and then I'll just, my, I'll end up with the, the three point three eight figure, which is the figure not, not taking into account the additional nine hundred thousand. Um, what are, are, are the drivers for that all smaller ones that add up to three point three eight? Or there, are there, in other words, what, what are the significant drivers that, um, are, would be increasing up to that level?
Um, well, you have the benefits budget, which is such a large budget that it's, I think that's a five or six percent. So that alone drives some of it.
Yep.
On its own. Um, and as I said, you have the, um, some of the offsetting, uh, funds that we don't have this year.
Yep.
So if those goes, go away like they did this year, that goes into the tax rate. Um, and.
So an awful lot of those that go into the three point three eight are fixed, either fixed costs or reduced revenues?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Great, thanks.
Mr. Ballantyne, good evening, sir. Um, and, Mr. Purple, I noticed as we're having a discussion on budgets, you, uh, wore your Scrooge.
No, it's not Scrooge, Mr. Kalenda, it is Grinch.
Okay. Is that Grinch? Close enough.
It is Grinch.
All right. Um, so OPEB, uh, we had this discussion a few meetings ago. Uh, two fifty has been in there for a while. I think it makes sense to have a good discussion. I'd love to hear what advisory's opinion is on it, whether or not we should increase that to say, for instance, three hundred and start doing three hundred over the next five to ten years, and then maybe it's three fifty after that period of time, so that we all have a mindset of, hey, two fifty in today's dollars is not two fifty in dollars ten years from now. So, I don't think, you know, while I think it's a good investment, I would be happy if, as long as we're doing something demonstrable, and I think we are. Um, but I also think we should definitely consider, uh, if this is the right time, and it may very well be, to, to move that up a next increment and then maintain that going forward. So that's one thing.
Mr. Kalenda, just a quick comment on that, please?
Yes.
Uh, so one of the, one of the items that we've talked about a little bit, um, Mr. Ballantyne and myself, is that you currently have a line item in here for, uh, uh, court judgments. Um, for the, um, the payment, the eight-year payment schedule to Northborough over the capital improvements to the high school. And that is about two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year that we're paying. That's going to be done in a couple of years, and there will be a suggestion at that point. I know we're talking a couple of years down the road, not this year, but there'll be a suggestion at that point, it, uh, at least from, from this finance team, that a portion of that, a significant portion of that should be reallocated back into OPEB. So that our increase, so our two fifty turns into three, three fifty, you know, four hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you for that. So I think that's good down the road, and, and as long as that mindset is maintained, uh, I still wanna have that conversation this year as to whether or not we should start doing that now, and maybe those monies could be reallocated that way later. Um, under general government, I see things like this every year. I've been, I've been doing this for a little while. Moderator's been there at, at seventy-five bucks for a long time. I always wonder, why? Um, no, but no moderator does that for the, the after taxes, the fifty dollars that they receive. So, why is it seventy-five dollars? What do other towns do? Do we ever even look at that? Um, and should that be adjusted to zero or something that is at least of some significance? Similarly, and I would not vote for it here, um, as I'm sitting here, but, uh, you know, selectmen salaries, is that appropriate? Should it be zero? Should it be five thousand? We, what is, what is out, we've been looking at the same numbers for years for these same things. Um, you know, the town council's been at ninety-five for a long time, is that right? Um, there are, um, you know, any, anyone who's, uh, an elected member or, you know, that we see the same number over and over again, are you punching that in? And there's, is there any analysis in that, or is it just, it's what it's been forever? And it's what it's gonna be forever unless someone asks the question?
I, I, I probably would agree with you that, yes, there's probably five or six in here you can pick, jury pick rate off pretty quick. And yes, you're correct, there, uh, we don't put a lot of, uh, analysis into them, uh, I'll be honest. Uh, it's something we can do, certainly. Um.
So I would ask.
There's small amounts, but yes, you're right, they should be looked at once in a while.
I, other, other, you know, then why is it there? If it's, if it's just seventy-five, seventy-five, no one's even thinking about it. I, I think this budget should be thought about, every line item should be thought about every year. And if adjustments need to be made up or down, then, uh, you know, to be in line with what is reasonable for that, um, even if it's zero, I don't, just whatever, again, I ask you to, you know, at, at least spend a little bit of time going through those things that are just repetitive every year. And then let us know your thoughts if that is actually the right number, 'cause we've never had, at least from, I can recall that discussion. Uh, I will also suggest, I see open spaces in here for two thousand dollars once again.
Yes.
Um, I was not an advocate for that last year, I'm not an advocate for that this year. Uh, I believe they wanted an increase to, um, be able to take some classes. In particular, the classes, uh, informed to this board were about learning more about butterflies, frogs and insects. If I'm, if, if my memory is, uh, correct, um, I thought that money could much better be served in, for instance, youth and family services. Um, and if that is, if that is gonna stay there at two thousand again, I guarantee you, I will bring it up again. And I will ask for an analysis of, of what that presentation is, that training that they went to. I would like to see it, let's show it to all of us and show that it's much more important than, uh, money going to, um, youth and family services. Uh, now going to the, some of the new items that are on, on here. I am an advocate and have, have been since my time on the board for public safety. Um, I know, and I'll start with police, I know that the chief is not here. He and I have had a, uh, opportunity to talk about the, the, the additions that he would like to, to see to his department. Um, I would be supportive of that, and, uh, I wanna ensure that our residents, there, yeah, there's nothing more, no bigger priority than, than I think we have, and, than ensuring that our residents are safe. And that includes police, it includes fire. We have our fire, new fire chief here, who has absolutely hit the ground running, who I hear wonderful things about, who I've had excellent experiences with. I would like to be supportive of his, uh, first budget out, uh, out the gate as, as our new fire chief. He has obviously seen things that, um, that are needs of that department, that he wants to make sure they're, that, again, are in the best interests of our residents to ensure that, um, in the event that those, um, you know, situations occur, that he has the proper personnel to make sure that our residents are safe. Um, additionally, youth and family services, I'll come back to them. Uh, again, I'm a advocate for public, you know, uh, you know, our, our police and fire professionals, um, that, that keep us safe. Youth and family services helps keep our, uh, you know, our families and our residents safe. Uh, and I, I remember last year, there was a good discussion about their budget. I think ultimately, um, you, you know, they received a budget that was, uh, not as they originally had asked for. I was supportive of a larger amount. Uh, I'm gonna be supportive of them again this year. Um, and so those are my three priorities, and, and, and I haven't delved into the others. Um, and I haven't heard from the others as much. They may very well have, uh, excellent reasons as to why they uh, want to need additional personnel or hours. Um, but those three jump out at me, and I will be supportive of those three at least.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman.
Couple of questions, please, thank you. Um, thanks, Mr. Ballantyne, very, very interesting presentation here. Um, I think along with some of the prior questions here, I think it's useful to continue to pursue a parallel track. One, the revenue side, as well as the expense side things. And I have a few questions on the revenue side to start with. One, I've been following the Mass Municipal Association and other reports of the recent governor's budget as it relates to the schools particularly. And it's, I find it very difficult to figure out exactly what that's gonna mean for Northborough, Southborough schools and Southborough K to eight, simply because the formulas that are in, integrated there are challenging. And usually, uh, takes everybody a long time to sort that out. But I look at the school budget going up by a total of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly between all the school programs. And, um, if by some miracle the state change generates a significant amount of additional funding, um, that creates less pressure on some of the other spending that we're, we're talking about here potentially. Do you have any insight in terms of what the final numbers are gonna look like for the schools out of the new state budget?
For the schools? No, I don't. Um, I will echo what you said, though, from what I've heard, it's a little complex figuring out where it's gonna land. Um, I know some of it is, is how that money can be spent and, and some of the programs that it can be spent on. I, I, from what I've heard, it's, it's a, they're still working on it, I know that a little bit.
Program-specific stuff in terms of special education, transportation and so forth, that I think can help us some. But the general thrust is toward the, the communities that are less wealthy than Southborough.
Correct.
They're gonna, some of them are gonna be helped substantially.
Correct.
And so, the good news is we're wealthy, the bad news is we're wealthy. So it's, it's a challenge. Um, so that's, for me, a big question, Mark, if, as we get a better idea of that, that may ripple through to some of these other things. Other question, related to previous comment on the change in the pricing for the ambulance services.
Yep.
Um, is that something that's going to affect the FY twenty-one budget here, and is that built into this?
It is not something that's gonna affect the twenty-one budget, it'll be the twenty-two budget.
Twenty-two budget, okay, so.
That is correct, yes.
Um, how about the meals tax that we're gonna talk about later here? Have you factored any of that into this?
We have not, no.
So that's a, another open issue that could create, depending on how that goes and the numbers, that could create a little relief.
Correct.
Um, from my time on the advisory committee, there's been discussion about DPW, uh, looking for, um, more aggressive cost accounting internally to, uh, figure out better what they do for other departments. And particularly water department, for example, that is, uh, uh, more or less independent financially there. Um, have we pursued those opportunities, do you think, and not just DPW, but in other places, to try to find ways that, uh, some of the costs can be built into places where we can actually generate more revenue?
Well, DPW in particular, we, um, we're, um, currently going through a, uh, study for the water rates, um, which is very important to their, um, you know, their business, um, now that it's a separate, um, fund.
Right.
So, they're, they'll have that, which is good. Um, where, and I'm not sure what you mean by the other departments, though, being analyzed.
Yeah, if, if DPW, for example, uh, does work for the recreation department, for field maintenance and so forth.
Yes, yes.
Can you, for example, uh, charge that back to rec, and then rec can recover some of that in terms of user fees or whatever, I don't know?
Yeah, well, we've had, we've had the general discussion about, I believe, and the town administrator, correct me if I'm wrong, but about the level of, the levels of service that DPW provides to certain departments that, that have needs of the DPW. And that they don't, um, overly burden their primary operations.
Right.
I think in the past, that wasn't there, that understanding wasn't there between departments. It is now.
Well, and, and some of that's a shell game in the sense that if you, if you charge it back to another department, it all comes out of the same pot eventually.
Right, right.
I guess I look for places where you can go outside.
That spot, charging back, because then it can just be more administrative chargebacks than.
More cost than, than that game, that's right. But if you have an opportunity for external funding sources to do something like that. Um, related to that, I, uh, suggested at one point in the past that we think about, uh, hiring a part-time grant writer to fund some of the things that we wanna do from grants. Is that, I don't see that included in here, that's not on the list.
That is not included, I, it hasn't come up. Um, I, I'm, you know.
I would raise that as an interesting possibility, because again, I've seen circumstances in other positions that I've had that, where a good grant writer can pay for themselves many times over in terms of, uh, taking some of the funding sources externally. So, um, I'm still looking at things, but that was the revenue questions. Um, on the cost side, um, I, I am actually, uh, pretty compelled by most of the part-time positions that are proposed here. I've had conversations with folks about, uh, these, and I think that all of them make pretty good sense. And I guess personally, I'm inclined to, uh, think about, uh, bumping the tax rate a little bit to pay for some things that, uh, we think are good things for the town, good things for the citizens. So I'm not so compelled to say there's a flat three percent cap or whatever the number is. And I think we ought to be, think very carefully about doing the right thing and accepting a little bit of pain, maybe not to the five point, whatever, percent increase. But I think there's an interesting conversation around the balance there, and I like the part-time positions, obviously, because of benefit things. And I think some of these things, again, are good things to do, and if you do them as part-time, you can watch them and see how they work. And if they don't work out, then you can back out of it more easily than if you hired a full-time person. So, I, I'm very interested in considering those very seriously. So, that's my list for the time being, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
So, Mr. Chairman, I just have, I just have one comment, and I do appreciate all the comments that the board has given this evening. Um, and, um, I think there's, you know, been a little dancing around the big issues, which, you know, again, the drivers of a lot of the new things, you know, are police and fire. So, those, you know, will be things that we're gonna continue to push you on in terms of, you know, giving us some sense of where you want to be. Uh, again, advisory is meeting with police and fire and DPW to talk about their budgets, um, uh, on January seventh. So, uh, any information you can provide them between now and then would obviously be helpful. One thing I just wanna point out to you, um, you know, that, um, with regards to the public safety project, I was having this conversation with Mr. Ballantyne earlier today. I don't think this project overall could have gone any better or lined up any better than it has. Um, you know, in terms of the funding pieces, and then in terms of the bonding pieces. And when the permanent financing was put in place, uh, working with, with, with Ms. Cook, um, you know, financial advisors, looking at everything, making sure we got the best rates and the structure, uh, and making some adjustments to our, um, uh, to our local receipts in order to make that happen. We were looking today at the bonding schedule and said, wow, look at the bonding schedule. We've got some debt that's peeling off for the next couple of years, when the biggest pieces of the public safety debt are hitting the tax rate. So the impact of those is going to be less than what we thought. And by the time the biggest piece of the debt falls off, I believe in twenty-four, Brian?
Yep.
Fiscal twenty-four? We're gonna start to be on the other side of the roller coaster, right? The debt is gonna start to be dropping, the amounts will drop a little bit each year for the public safety for the remainder of the, of the term. It's perfect. It lined up really well, and I just wanna make sure this board, when you're looking at these items and consider putting additional, essentially permanent pieces on our operational budget, unless we're gonna start peeling back some of these improvements if things get tough. I wanna make sure that we're not gonna take a lot of those things that we've done to set things up for the community and, and put us in good shape to be able to afford that building or make it more affordable, that we're not just gonna backfill with, with, you know, uh, a lot of operational peaches. That, Mr. Kalenda made a, you know, point, you know, that, that we, you know, that there is value in, and, you know, and it is a community decision, you know, if we need that, but just, please keep that in mind. That's all.
Ms. Brashill?
Um, just one, one comment. I know that advisory's here, they're having a joint meeting. And, um, I just wonder if advisory has had any of these conversations, potentially on any of the salary items, 'cause that seems to be what we focused on a lot tonight. Um, I don't know, in your preliminary discussions, Ms. Cook, if there's, if you guys have, maybe you feel very differently than we do, and maybe you could potentially shed a little bit of light on some of the questions we had. Thank you.
Am I on?
Yeah.
Um, so this would be a good segue into the meals tax, too, I think, but, um, a couple of specific comments. Um, we have met with some of the small departments. We're in the weeds at this point, so we don't have a, a, a general idea of what we wanna, wanna do here. But, um, the part-time positions that are proposed are not only compelling. I think in one case, we're gonna say, this person needs more, he needs a full-time person. Um, the IT department is totally on the backs of Mr. Lam. Something happens to him, we got a problem, so we have no backup for him. He is at all these meetings at seven and eight o'clock at night, he gets phone calls at three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning, something goes wrong. So we're not so sure, we, we actually may come back and say, surprisingly, we think that position should be full-time. So, we wouldn't, there's nothing that we've seen so far that I don't, I think we would ratchet back. The youth and family depart, youth and family services department, um, they're asking for two part-time people because they think that that's more, um, financially palatable than one person. If you hear why they need those two people, you cry. I mean, the case that they made last week, you just want to, um, do more. Um, so I don't see how that goes away. They have got to have an admin person in that office to do what an admin person should do. Answer the phone and be there when people knock on their door. No one's there right now. So, so far, we have no, um, basis for seeing what we've seen so far should be ratcheted back. We haven't met with, um, the two chiefs as far as their positions go, nor Brian with his. So we'll see what we think about those. We actually think maybe in those cases, there is some room to, to, to cut those back or, um, stage it in a way that it doesn't impact the budget in full for, for this year. So that's my comment on the, the people so far. But a couple of other things, um, Mr. Healy, we were talking about schools. The report that I've seen from Algonquin is really surprising, and I, I didn't know this. Um, eighty percent of kids at Trotter go to Algonquin. A hundred percent of kids in eighth grade Northborough go to Algonquin. So that's part of the difference, and that's getting. A hundred percent of kids in eighth grade in Northboro go to Algonquin, so that's part of the difference and that's getting wider. The, the enrollment statistics that they rely on do look like the classes are gonna continue to go down still for a while, so that, that difference still is probably gonna get bigger for a while and it may turn around at some point, we can't count on it. But that, I think, is a surprising, um, fact that I didn't realize till I read what they, they gave us this year. Um, the schools, if it's gone up to four percent, um, for three and a half, that's a big deal. Cause you know, schools are sixty percent of the budget, so I'm hoping he's gonna get it back down to even three percent, which would make things, but there's, the problem with this year is, it sounds like five point six now, we can get down to maybe something lower. I'm not so sure we can either, um, to your point, you know, I would love it to say two or three, um, but it's spread pretty broadly. We've got people, yes, that's part of it, we've got capital, which is part of it, but there's just a bunch of capital, there's no real big capital piece of it. There's, you know, fifteen or sixteen, they're all a hundred thousand each, it's a million four. Um, we've got the revenue that's dropped, which is why we think the local, um, meals tax should be added. So revenue's down five hundred thousand dollars, which is a point and a quarter itself. So it's just a lot of little things that have added up to where we are now, so, I don't know. I hope we get it down some, but I'm not necessarily optimistic either at this point, so we'll just have to see. So we're in the weeds, long way to go.
Fair enough, thank you.
Anything else? Anybody has? Okay. Yeah, um, I know there are a number of department and committee representatives that are here, if anybody wanted to make a statement, Mr. Smith, you can start if you'd like. Uh, if you could please go to a microphone though, please.
Good evening, Ben Smith, I'm the vice chair of Conservation Commission, our chair, Mark Posamato. I know he'd like to be here tonight, was unable to attend, but I'm here with, uh, four other commissioners, Jeff Pete, Carl Geier, Judith Taylor and Sheri Widdes. Uh, and I believe Joyce Greenleaf was also, wants to talk about this and of course, uh, here to discuss, uh, uh, and, and ask for, uh, some part-time administrative help to help Melissa Danza, who will, you will recall, was hired about a year and a half ago and, uh, has turned out to be, um, uh, an absolute superstar. Uh, and I would like to point out that she's an absolute superstar in, in doing the work of a conservation agent while spending fifty percent of her time doing administrative tasks. Uh, we would like to make the highest and best use of her valuable time, of, of her experience, her education, her work ethic, uh, on things that bring the greatest return to the town and, and have somebody who specializes in the administrative end of things, uh, taking care of that. There are some paybacks for doing this. Um, things that Melissa, by not having to devote so much time to the admin, things that she can do that are going to benefit, uh, the town's residents i- in a pretty big way. Uh, I've got a short list here, more frequent visits to sites that have been permitted by the Conservation Commission. Uh, because she just doesn't have the time, there's a, there's a longer period between site visits at active sites that have permits uh, than we would like to see and what that, what that causes is that small problems aren't caught early and they grow and they grow and they become big problems. And if she was able to stop out, uh, uh, at every site more frequently, this would be caught and, and would save property owners, the, you know, money and headaches that result from these kinds of things. Uh, she can spend more time reviewing applications that are submitted and, this was a big one, having pre-submitting meetings with prospective applicants. Uh, the commission, we've seen over and over applicants that come in and meet with our agent beforehand and go over the application. When they come into a public hearing, they're in and out so much more quickly. Now, we're talking about applicants, they come to the meeting and they have engineers, wetland scientists, attorneys. Every time they attend a meeting, it's an expensive proposition and if we can get them from three meetings down to two or two meetings down to one, there's a big cost savings for, you know, the property owners, uh, of Southborough. And, you know, the reason she can't meet with, with every single person who's going to submit an application, it, it's, it's a time constraint. I mean, she's got, she spends about twenty, twenty hours doing, doing admin type duties that can't be put off, that have to be done and that leaves her with twenty hours to devote to the rest of her duties. Uh, she'll be able to, uh, spend additional time assisting, uh, home and landowners with site-specific questions at their property. So the Wetlands Protection Act, our Southborough Wetlands Protection Bylaw, the Stormwater Management Bylaw, these are complicated things. Uh, folks who have, who have never worked with them before, it really is, it really is confusing. Um, a little time spent by a homeowner with Melissa, learning about these, these regulations, when they're contemplating a project, if they can come in and talk with her and, and see what the requirements are, you know, before they enlarge a driveway or install a pool, save them the, the, the cost of violations that, that occur and we've, we've had this happen. Those, okay, so we've kinda broken this up into a couple of parts here. Those are, uh, uh, sort of the, the wetland and stormwater end of things that I think will, will, will bring a, you know, an obvious concrete payback to the, the residents of Southborough. Conservation commissions, prior to the adoption of the Wetlands Protection Act, there still were conservation commissions and their, their original role, and it's still a very important role, is managing what was back then called conservation land. There's a great deal of open space in, in Southborough and in the commission, with the growing complexity of, of, of wetlands protection and stormwater management, uh, by necessity has backed off of the, the management of these parcels. Uh, I'd like, if Judith, if you'd like to, uh, discuss the, the open space end of things that we're, okay.
Hi, Judith Watson, I'm on the Conservation Commission. I joined, uh, almost a year ago and, uh, would fully concur with what Ben was saying is it is a technical area, um, of our regulations and Melissa has a very, very considerable knowledge of stormwater management, wetland protection. You know, when you see her in action with our, with our, uh, our peer reviewers, Fuston O'Neil and Lucas Environmental, she's a very impressive young lady. The thing that she's also very passionate about is moving forward the more strategic aspects of conservation management, to Ben's point. We do have a lot of conservation land, we have conservation restrictions and at the moment, because of the focus on the admin side, her, her other part of, uh, of her work is primarily focused on compliance, which is in itself very important to the residents, um, but, and also to the town as a whole. But she would really like, and we as a conservation commission would really like to be moving forward on more strategic areas. The open space and rec plan, um, which is in its final stages of approval, I believe it'll come to you, uh, to the board for review, um, if it's not already been here, uh, yeah, in the next, uh, month or so, has got six very key goals, thirty-nine different actions and recommendations over a five-year period. Um, ten of those are actually the, the, the responsibility of the conservation, um, group to actually work on those. There's, there's some pretty meaty projects in there, for example, taking a top-to-toe look at stormwater management, which hasn't been really looked at since two thousand and three and some of the feedback that we get from our residents that come, um, and present, uh, requests for stormwater, they are clearly, um, it's a, it's a difficult area for them to, to get their head around. Um, and there are definitely opportunities for us to be more efficient, uh, and more environmentally sensitive as a town, um, than we have been. So there's those ten main projects, there are fourteen other project areas where the Conservation Commission, uh, is being asked to participate. That's, so over sixty percent of the open space rec plan needs resources and the Conservation Commission, you know, the volunteer members are very keen to, to spend time there, but we definitely need Melissa's expertise and her knowledge and her, you know, her way of dealing with her stakeholders that I think is really valuable, um, for the town there.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, so just real quickly on the open space topic, you know, there are, there are, by my count, um, uh, I'm, I'm sure I'm pretty close to the true total, thirty-six town-owned parcels that are under the care and control of the Conservation Commission totaling five hundred and thirty acres. Uh, the majority of these properties are completely unmanaged, they just, they sit there. Um, they should, they should be at least visited periodically to prevent encroachment and to prevent loss of access to them. There are another five parcels totaling roughly two hundred and fifty acres where the commission is either the holder or a coholder of a conservation restriction and CRs require a yearly inspection. Due to lack of time, what we've been doing right, right now is, these inspections are typically handled by hiring Subberry Valley trustees. Uh, Melissa certainly has the professional expertise to handle these, these, uh, the yearly CR inspections and we would love to have her do it, uh, to keep us in, in, in closer touch with these properties that we have the responsibility for. Uh, there are a couple of other tasks that the commission would, would love to take on, but we just, we haven't been able to due to the time constraints. Um, this is one that I know is actually a goal of Melissa also and I, I believe that she, uh, was doing in her former role as a, a, a conservation agent elsewhere, academic and educational outreach to citizens in schools. You know, her education experience can provide a great deal of value to the ecology and science curricula of the town's schools. The Southborough Wetlands Protection Bylaw and Stormwater Management Bylaw, uh, like all other bylaws, they need to periodically be reviewed and updated. In the commission, you know, we routinely see things that, you know, areas of the regulations that, that we need to look at for, for updating and for streamlining and simplifying. Uh, and, and we need Melissa's help to do that, you know, in particular, the way these things happen is you, you need to survey uh, other similar communities and that's a, a task that we, we would love to have her able to do. Uh, finally, um, I believe Ms. Greenleaf was hoping also to speak on the same topic, that's, okay.
I'm Joyce Greenleaf and I'm the chair of the stewardship committee and I just wanna echo what my colleagues on conservation have said about needing more support from Melissa. Stewardship is in charge of managing the Breakneck Hill Conservation Land, which is a gem in Southborough, visited by hundreds of people a day, dog walkers, birders, uh, nature lovers. Uh, we spend a lot of time maintaining the trails, dealing with invasives. Um, there's very important scholarship going on there funded, um, by the National Si- Science Foundation through a local professor on native bees that were thought to be extirpated from Massachusetts that were found in Southborough. This will result in important peer-reviewed literature. This is, this is important work that supports the conservation mission of the Conservation Commission, which stewardship works closely with. We have missed opportunities as a small committee of volunteers with a big responsibility to go for bigger grants that would bring in funding so that we could do more conservation and passive recreation work at Breakneck Hill and even other properties like the town forest. Melissa has the expertise, she has the skills, she has the education to help us with getting bids, writing grants, overseeing contractors, things that we can't do. Uh, we, um, weren't able to apply for a grant for as much as fifty thousand dollars from the state last year because we couldn't get responses to our request for bids and that's the kind of paperwork that has to be in place to go for these grants. If Melissa was relieved of some of the administrative responsibilities that take up so much of her time, she would be able to devote her expertise and energy in ways that would pay back, uh, multiple times to the town. Um, and if you haven't visited Breakneck Hill lately or the town for, forest, I encourage you to do so. We have wonderful trails, um, at both places. We, uh, always have opportunities for Eagle Scouts, we work with the Live Blue ambassadors of the prestigious New England Aquarium, which is a group of youth volunteers, so we're doing a lot for the town of Southborough and would appreciate your support for, uh, expanding the support to the Conservation Commission agent.
Thank you very much. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak? Sure.
Hi, I'm Sue Baka with Youth and Family Services and we're asking for two part-time admins this year. Um, we prefer a full-time admin because it'll be a job-sharing situation, but, um, I can't tell you, um, how much we need to have somebody sitting at that front desk. When people come in in a crisis situation and there's no one there or the people that are doing the, um, uh, the therapy have to take shifts to sit in that spot, there's something wrong with that. Um, and I really, really think that we, we need that. Um, they have cell phones now, they can call, but they, you really can walk up there and not, not see a human being. Um, and by the time they, uh, get a voicemail, you know, it could be, it could be too late. Um, so I'm really advocating for that. I'd prefer, like I said, to have a full-time person, but I know that includes benefits. Um, and I just really want you guys to consider that need for us. Um, and also, the other thing we talked about with advisory is it's a safety issue. Um, the women that do the counseling there are sometimes there in the evenings, which means someone else has to sit back um, because they're afraid to kinda leave somebody alone who may be doing counseling with a family member and if something were to go, go wrong. Um, so it's a safety issue too. Um, and, and again, uh, we appreciate your support last year, um, but I'm very passionate about this. I just, it cannot be left, that office cannot be left with, with nobody there. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Anybody else?
Brian?
Thanks, Sam.
Could I make a quick comment? Um, go back to the ConCom thing, I attend a lot of Conservation Commission meetings, just, I'm interested in the, in the area. I think we're extraordinarily fortunate to have a highly skilled and, and, uh, hard-working conservation agent as well as a, a co- commission. Uh, they do a lot of work, very much behind the scenes typically and I think that this is a key, uh, function relative to protecting and enhancing what I think most people would consider as a great asset to the town in terms of the open space here. And so I think this is a very high payback investment in people and it's high on my priority list, so I would hope we take that very seriously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Shay, I will, I'll, I'll echo that. I think, uh, you know, Ben made a very good argument as to why, um, you know, that position is needed. Um, you know, I, I will ultimately, I, I will prioritize if I could, if we can, as a board, as advisory, do, uh, hear from and then do all of these things, outstanding, you know, cause I, I think too often we, we end up, again, just like what I was talking about before, seventy-five, seventy-five, we've gone out without the position for so long, you know, have we been doing the wrong thing for so long? Should we have had that position, uh, a full-time position or two part-time or, uh, you know, we, at, at some point, we gotta right the ship and, uh, I'll prioritize, again, as, as I would on, on, uh, you know, public safety and then personal safety, um, and I'll go from there, but if we can do all of these things and do them responsibly and, and you know what? At some point, if we have to, if the tax rate goes up because of it, if, if OPEB responsibilities go up because of it, I don't care if it's the right thing to do and I'm confident that if we, as a collective boards and community, say these are the right things to do for our residents, I guarantee you, I'm confident anyway, the residents, uh, that come to town meeting will be fully supportive.
Okay, so I don't think we need to have, oh, Mr. Ballantyne.
No, just a, just a last closing, um, question for the chair or maybe the board. Would you care to have us run, the town administrator and myself could run a, two or three scenarios and present them maybe at a future meeting of, you know, everything in, nothing in, portions in? And we can, you take a look at them?
I would.
If, if I may, um, Mr. Shay, maybe if we just take a few minutes, I mean, there are some on this list I as well have spoken to and I'm more comfortable moving forward with, but there, there are some that I haven't had a conversation on and I don't have any information on. Would it be beneficial to kind of go through, um, you know, some of the requests on here? And some we may be able to give advisory guidance on where we stand on them, some I don't think we're gonna have an issue on. And then we can take a look at what's left and where we would like to get additional information and maybe we can do that and, and wrap this piece up. That's just a suggestion.
Sure, so there are specific ones that you want to put forth that we consider definitely including?
Sure, I mean, um, you know, we, we heard from Conservation Tonight, we'll, we'll start with that one, they're, they're here. And I also agree that, that, that Melissa does an amazing job and, um, I do also believe that she does need the support, so this is one that, that, um, I'm behind one hundred percent. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but.
Me too.
Okay.
As they say.
So I, I am, but I'm prioritizing, so I'm gonna start with police and fire and youth and family services. There may be deductions from open space, like we talked about, small but meaningful. Um, and then, you know, I'll, uh, I would like to get to, uh, conservation as well. I am supportive of it, but I will, I'm prioritizing first.
Yeah, I, I'm supportive of pretty much all of these, I mean, all of them, I mean, this is, you know, going back to the time I spent.
I mean, all of them, I mean, this is, you know, going back to the time I spent on advisory, I mean, the pitches and the presentations usually make sense. I mean, there, there is, there, there are needs across the Board. I'm just a little bit wary, and that's why I like Mr. Ballantyne's suggestion about running some scenarios. I'm just a little bit wary, because you're right, Conservation is here, but other folks aren't.
Well, that's my point. If we could go through and decide who we would like to hear from. For instance, I know the Chief is here, but I know he's meeting with advisory next week, and I haven't spoken to the Chief, and I don't know how great his need is, other than it's on paper. You know, I had the opportunity to speak to the Police Chief, and I'm, I'm very comfortable with this need for a variety of different reasons. I mean, I had the opportunity to do a ride-along, and I know I've mentioned this before, but I'll, I'll say it again, that, you know, I was in a ride-along, I was on the south side of town, there was a call that came in over by Fayetteville Park of an officer needing backup with a combative person that was pulled over, and it took us eight and a half minutes. There was two officers on duty at the time. It took us eight and a half minutes to get there, and all I could think, besides wanting to do the, the siren, was that, you know, if that was an officer truly in need battling someone combative that was trying to get his gun, it could have had a very different turnout. So that was one factor for me. Another factor is something that happened recently. There was an incident in where I live, and before the Fire Department could come, the Police had to come. It was night, there were two officers on. Both officers had to come, they had to make sure that the scene was, was fine, and then they had to stay with the Fire Department. Twenty-five minutes, the Fire Department, I mean, sorry, the Police Department with the two officers that were on at night were there. They weren't out on the road, I mean, if another call came in, I'm sure they would have done something. So I, I understand the Chief's need for three officers on. So I am, I am fully, fully supportive, but again, I've had the opportunity to speak to him as well as my personal experience. So I would like that same opportunity with the Fire Chief before I can actually say 100% yes. I'm, I'm certainly leaning that way, but again, without that conversation, I don't have the information that I need.
All right. So I'm going to make a suggestion, just again, given the time of night that it is now and the remaining items that we have on the agenda, right now it appears that our agenda on the seventh is on the lighter side. Why don't we give ourselves some time to continue to think about this, be able to reach out on our own to other departments, get other answers, if there are groups that we haven't had an opportunity to reach out to yet, and then pick this up again at our meeting on the seventh and maybe work towards finalizing the budget at that point. Again, just so we can get through the rest of the items that we have tonight, rather than try and prioritize now, and there are a number of groups that we haven't spoken to and have, and are here to represent themselves.
And one of the, one of the most important things for me, Brian, is, is, and it's something that, that Mr. Purple mentioned at the beginning, is the, the path that expenditures are going to put us on. Because, boy, I can't remember, I'm not sure if the entire time I've lived in Southborough, if there's been an, an override that dealt with operational funding. We've done overrides over the years that had to do with, with budget items and capital outlays and everything like that. I, I, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't remember...
I don't recall one during my time.
Yeah, and so I'd like to, I'd like to make sure, in whatever you're running, that, that we are not putting ourselves on a path that in some certain number of years, we're going to be in the position where we either have to make some drastic cutbacks, or we have to say to the town of Southborough, "Sorry, we need an override." Hasn't been done since nineteen, fill in the blank, but we need one now. That's not the sort of management I want to do for the town.
So, Mr. Healy, there's one, and I will point out one thing, and Mr. Ballantyne can corroborate this or say that I'm lying, but when I got here, we did a projection out of, you know, five years, and we took a look, and we said, within three years, we're going to be in the red, we're going to be looking at an operational override, okay? We have made changes to our structure, we have made changes to health insurance, we have done a lot of different things that keep pushing those red numbers out, where we really don't see those red numbers now, and you're looking at, as we sit here today, $2.8 million in excess levy capacity. And as Brian said, we haven't always had that here. You know, this finance team has done a great job of putting us in a good position. I think we're not telling you not to do certain things, we just want you to think about what you're doing, to exactly your point, to make sure we don't put ourselves in a bad position where all of a sudden we're looking at revenue projections and we see those red numbers start to come back into the projections.
Brian, could I ask for one more thing on the projections?
Quickly, please, though.
Okay. In the past, we've, actually, when we've drilled into some of the people changes, and I remember some public safety things that have come along, timing, timing's important. So sometimes when you drill into it, you say, by the time we do these things, it's going to take a couple of years to get into the full effect. So you might consider, are there phasing opportunities in here that make sense, consultation with the Chiefs particularly in terms of full talent?
You are correct, yes.
So that would be interesting to look at.
So that's one of the things when we suggested, take a look at the position, the need, the impact on the service, rather than the dollar number, because if you decide it's something you want to go forward with, then we can take a look at how to structure it to make it more financially palatable.
And I'm, I'm interested in how to do that, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you.
And everybody for, for coming out tonight. Great. Next, we're going to move on to continued discussion of local meals taxes recommended by the Advisory Committee. Ms. Cook, you wanted to start with a few words. Just before you do, can I just get like a rough show of hands in the room? Is there anybody that came here tonight to speak on behalf of the local meals tax, one way or the other?
You got EDC here, too.
Yep. So, and I asked that, I know we had, there was an outreach to a number, I think all of the local restaurants in, in the town, and I was just curious if anybody had come to speak. I know we had a representative from Owen O'Leary's here the last time we discussed this. So, make sure this gets included. Ms. Cook?
Please. So, one quick, I think we really do, I think we really are going to need to put together an alternative budget that shows the town what we'd have to not do to get down to 3%. And just say, this is what we'd have to do, and so this is why it needs to be five, because that's what we end up being. So I do think we need to go through that exercise and say, this is, this is what you'd have to, to deal with if you really want 3%. Okay, local optional meals tax. So since we met last, I have talked to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven businesses, and some of those I know have talked to Ms. Brascio, and talked to Mr. Kalinda, and talked to Mr. Robbins. The question I ask, which I want to make clear, I did not ask the businesses if they like the tax, because who likes taxes? They're going to say no, right? What I said was, very consistently, "Do you think it would hurt your revenue if we added this tax?" And in every case, they said no. They had some nuanced answers, which I want to make sure I, I explain in a second, but they all said no. We did the math, and a couple cases, I actually said, "Go ahead and do it." So let me just talk about two that we were concerned about last time, or at least Ms. Brascio was, which is the two Main Street businesses because of all the roadwork. So I spent quite a bit of time with Miles Market, and I spent quite a bit of time with Southborough House of Pizza, which I know you two did, too. So let me start with the House of Pizza. He said, "I'm fine with the tax." He goes, "I just got a problem with taxes in general." You know, "I want the country to do that." We talked about Sweden, Swigolf, a lot of stuff, but he says he's fine with the tax. We went through the mechanics of it. He said, "You know, on a pizza, we're talking eight cents." So he goes, "It's not going to affect my business." He goes, "I just don't, it's, it's all these taxes we have to pay together, I'm, I'm, I'm not good with them." And I said, "What we're trying to do is not increase the expenses of Southborough, the budget, we're trying to reallocate how the budget's paid for, so we keep the real estate taxes down and find other sources of revenue, which we thought this was one. We think that this is going to be paid for in some significant part by outsiders that come to Southborough, just like we pay when we go to their towns. All the towns around us have it." So that was his answer to me, and that was this afternoon, so that's, that's very fresh. Miles was really interested, so I talked to father and son, father lives here, son lives in Hockington, and we got into a long discussion. They're, they don't think it's going to affect their business, they're just worried about business in general. They said, "It's so competitive," you know, "They're worried about, it's hard to make a living in Southborough as far as restaurants go." They are worried about the impact of the roadwork for the next three years, as far as what it may do to them. Interesting, the son, who doesn't live here, said, "I," he said, "they said okay with the tax." I mean, their eyes were kind of big at first, and then they sat down when I kind of explained what we're trying to do. And he's, the son said, "What I would really vote for, I would love this tax if you would use it for something to make Southborough better." He said, "You don't do anything here. You know, you do heritage day, but you don't do anything else. So I'd love for you to take that money and do something that makes Southborough more exciting." I said, "Well, that's probably another discussion as far as that goes, but I, I hear you, I'll pass it on and make sure everybody knows." So that was, you know, an interesting conversation. The rest of them, Tommaso's was fine with it, Ola's was fine with it, Starbucks guy, Eric, who's the manager, they said, "Oh, I actually encourage you to do it." So I didn't get any pushback as far as my question, which is, "Do you think it would hurt your revenue?" So if you look at what I, we put in front of you, so Andrew Feff put this together. So we think that this is a, at least some more information that shows that adding the tax shouldn't hurt the revenue of our businesses, our local businesses. We don't think it's going to. I called Colleen Rask, who lives in Southborough, she's an economist, teaches at Holy Cross, and she said, "Absolutely not." She said, "It's such a small increase, it's, it's not elastic at all, it's not going to affect demand." She said, "It's, it's, don't worry about it, this is not going to change behavior at all," which is what I said, "Does it change, will this change behavior, Colleen?" She said, "No, it absolutely wouldn't." So I think that advisory lease is convinced we are not going to hurt the revenue of local businesses by doing this, and it would take a little bit of pressure off the real estate taxes, so, which is a reason we don't want to earmark it. We want it to go into the general budget. We just talked about how revenue's going to go down $500,000, this would put 150 back into it. So, you know, 150,000 is, is, you know, almost 40, 0.4% of the percentage on the real estate tax increase. So it is, it's small, but it's year-over-year, it's an annuity, we'll get it every year, it should go up a little bit every year, and it will pay for something that's pretty large if you finance it over time. So I think that's all I've got to say. EDC is here, they have voted, I'll let EDC tell you what their vote is, so they have taken an official vote last week as far as their opinion on this. I'll let them tell you what that is, because I may not say it exactly. So that's all we've got to add to what we told you when we were here last time as far as supportive. Our advisory's still unanimously going to, to support this at town meeting.
Quick question?
Actually, go ahead, I'll go with your question, then I'm going to ask Mr. Ballantyne a question.
Okay. Kathy, you cabinned very carefully a number of times, that, that specifically having to do with whether it would impact their business, does that mean you wandered into other areas where they thought that it might have an impact, or?
No, I tell you the one thing that everyone were concerned about, once they heard all the towns around us had it, they went, "Oh, that's fine, then." I said, "Every town but Hockington has it." So that question was asked every single time, except by the Starbucks guy, he already knew, he already knew about this. He said, "Oh, you know, you're paying it every place else, they should pay it here, too." So they were concerned that we were not going to be an outlier as far as doing this. So remember, 241 out of 351 towns have the tax right now.
Right.
As far as that goes.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Ballantyne, if I could, is it possible to earmark this tax, or would it have to go to the general fund?
It's a paper earmark, so basically that means it, it goes to the general fund, and you have to kind of re-appropriate through the normal appropriation process, sort of like mitigation money. How some of that mitigation money, we intend to do certain things, but it has to close out, go to free cash, and then you, or it goes to local revenues. You up your revenues, and then you appropriate it out of the regular budget. So there's no direct, there's no formal way of putting it in a grant fund, say, and it stays there and just, you use it. You can't do that.
And that would be on a year-by-year basis?
Correct.
So there's no way to earmark this right now, that, you know, all boards are hereby obligated, this money goes into this account?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you.
If I may. Just one question for Ms. Cook. So at our last meeting, the gentleman that owns Owens was here and spoke against it. So can you just touch a little bit on your conversation with him, because I'm kind of surprised?
Didn't talk to him.
Oh, you didn't talk to him?
No, because I knew what he'd said. We weren't, remember, we had to leave early that meeting, but I heard, so...
Oh, I thought you said you, you talked to Owens.
I, I didn't mean to say that.
Maybe I misunderstood.
I talked to Tommaso's, I talked to Ola's, I talked to Miles's Cafe.
Okay, Ola, I'm sorry, I thought it was Owens, so, that's fine, thank you.
Because he said what he, you know, what, what he meant, so I assumed he wasn't going to change his mind.
I misunderstood what you said. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
I just want to hear from BDC, because I read their letter, and I believe they'd like to see it if they were supportive of it, it's if it was earmarked. But I want to hear from them, and if it can't be, then I got some other questions from Mr. Ballantyne, I got issues that I want resolved, so.
Tom Collins, the new Chair of EDC, been sworn in 24 hours ago.
Congratulations, Doug.
I think we delivered a letter to you that said that we were in favor of it. I'm not, I don't think the letter said we were looking for an earmark. We would like it to be something that some of those funds are directed toward business development. You've been sitting here all night talking about the budget and the spending side, and a little bit of talk about the revenue side, and I think to the extent that you pass a meeting... So...
I think your mic is cutting in and out, so...
Is that better? Hello?
Yeah. We may need to swap some batteries, but go ahead.
So, so the meal tax will be, I think the, the state estimate is about $120,000 a year. But, you know, we, the EDC is involved in a number of things, including the, the downtown initiative, which would hopefully bring more commercial business back to Southborough, to the Main Street area. And it's those kinds of things that the EDC seizes opportunities for you to increase the revenue side. And so to the extent that if you look around at all the different cities and towns around us who have the meal tax, they've also taken a very aggressive stand on building their downtowns, Hudson, Marlboro. Northborough has a lot more retail than they've ever had. And it's not just retail, I mean, we've got, we've got Route 9 that goes through town. We could look at that and figure out higher and better uses for that land that would bring in more revenue. But to get companies to decide they want to be in Southborough, there has to be more than just office space. I'm in the real estate business, not the development business, the real estate services business. And I asked my brokers who work in this market about whether or not tenants want to be in Southborough, and they said, "Well, no, because coming out of their buildings, they have to go left or right. There aren't that many places for them to go for lunch or for shopping, what have you." So to the extent that you could create value in the real estate that exists, upgrade the uses, upgrade the taxes, you'd have to also provide places for those tenants to enjoy. So it's that live, work, play thing that everybody wants everywhere, and Southborough doesn't have a lot of the live, work, live-play part. So that's part of the reason for the, the focus on, on Main Street. Everybody, not everybody, people are concerned that we're trying to change the nature of the Village Business District. It's been changing over the last 50 years. What used to be there isn't there anymore. And so restoring some of those services, you know, there's not a post office there anymore, there's only a couple of small restaurants there. There isn't, while Moro's is a coffee shop, it's not a coffee shop the way people use coffee shops today. If Red Barn could be downtown, they'd be downtown, but there is no place for them to be downtown. So as we think about the, the Village District, we think about, there is not a lot of, there's no land there for us to say, "Let's zone this piece of land for something." What we're focused on is trying to create an overlay district that says, if in the future, somebody wanted to buy this property, or buy that property, or take Park Street and buy that land and develop it, they'd be allowed to do certain things that would have to have a certain size and a certain look to it, and that they could go through the permitting process and rest, and be pretty assured that they can get that done.
Okay.
And when you have that, you have the ability to finance it, and you have the ability to tenant it. And so we are for the meals tax, we're for more restaurants to, to collect them from.
Mr. Kalinda, you had follow-up questions with Mr. Ballantyne?
So I don't know if that really helps, Mr. Ballantyne, you gave an explanation of, so it can't be done, but maybe there's a way to allocate it every year? I mean, can you establish a repetitive process where it just is automatic, or does it have to go in front of this board, or, you know, how mechanically, how would it work if, for instance, we said, "All right, we'll be supportive of this," and I'm not right now, but I could be, "We'll be supportive of this, but it needs to be earmarked for OPEB, or for economic development activities, or for beautification efforts throughout town with a focus on, you know, right, you know, Main Street, or whatever." Mechanically, how could this happen so it's, it's in effect a earmark towards a certain way? But I understand maybe it can't be processed way. How does it work?
So, basically, take the OPEB example, I guess. You could, you could up your local receipts if this was supported by the board. Say, $100,000. You up your local receipts. That goes on the revenue side of the things. And then you up your OPEB budget by $100,000. And if you leave it like that for perpetuity or for a number of years, in essence, you've done just what you've wanted to do. You've directed it. There's no formal way. Municipal accounting has certain formal ways of doing things where you, certain monies come in, and they are specifically, and by law cannot be used for other certain purposes. This is not one of them. So, you have to sort of do a, like I said, I think the best way of saying is a paper process where...
So, for instance, if we collectively said, "Okay, well, we agree. We want to increase the OPEB account from 250 a year to 350 a year."
Mm-hmm.
All right, we do that. And then secondary conversation is, we agree to a meal tax.
Correct.
That we otherwise didn't have. And then magically, in our minds anyway, that money is going towards something that...
It works. The way it doesn't work, maybe that you'd like to work, is there's no formal policy. There's no lawful obligation for it to be done that way. So, it can change. Just know that in years ahead. But it can be done through sort of an informal process.
Thank you, Brian. So, I guess, Mr. Shea, my challenge with all this has been, you know, I'm not looking for new ways to tax. And some of this is going to be a tax on our residents, small though it is. It's going to be a tax on those who utilize our own in-town restaurants and services. They're going to, the restaurants are going to clearly, obviously, pass it along to the residents. So, it is going to be an increase to all of our residents who use any of our in-town services. Surely, some of it's going to be from out of town. I often will look at, "Okay, what do the other towns around us do? And we should, you know, make sure that we're in line, you know, with responsible ways of doing things." As other towns may have good ideas. I don't know that this is that badge of honor that I want to say, "Yeah, we're with all the other towns who are, come up with another tax." As I said last time, I am afraid of, "All right, we've come up with a new tax. Awesome." You know, what's the next one? Anyone who utilizes, "We're going to have a millionaire's tax next. We're going to have a, you know, anyone who uses lawn service, you know, there's another tax." Anyone who uses, name your next tax that we can then hit someone on. And no, I'm looking for ways to decrease the tax burden, not increase. Now, maybe in some measure, this is a way to decrease the tax burden, because it's predominantly, if the analysis is right, and I trust it is, most of, much of it will be from folks coming from other towns. But if it's earmarked, and if we do, in fact, I'll throw out the OPEB option, because we're dramatically underfunded there. And, you know, if we agree to increase that, I'd entertain this as a way to, off-paper, do that.
So, I did reach out to Mr. Purple and Mr. Ballantyne, I guess, just to put all this in perspective. So, assuming the $120,000 a year revenue is correct, and that revenue gets added to the recap sheet, and it would then get deducted from the taxes, so the average homeowner is going to save about $28 a year on their tax bill by implementing this tax. And then, obviously, those who go to local restaurants, whether it's, you know, any of the coffee shops, the restaurants that have been mentioned, you know, the number of times you go, I guess homeowners can do the math to figure out, you know, what they spend on a yearly basis at those places times .075, correct? And they can weigh the difference between the $28 they're going to save and the real estate taxes versus the extra that they would pay in the local meals tax, you know, the 120. I don't think this is by any means the solution to the revenue problems in the budget. And this isn't going to, you know, have a dramatic, dramatic increase or reduction in the estimated 5.69% tax increase now. But those are the numbers that we're, that we're talking about with this, with implementing this tax.
Brian, they'd have to spend about $3,800 annually to save, to cost them $28 on the tax for meals. So, a lot of dinners.
And again, Ms. Cook, circling back to the last time you were here, the people who would either pay a property tax or a meals tax, or at least some of the people paying the meals tax, still would have to approve this. I mean, we don't, it doesn't stop here.
Correct.
The meals tax has to be approved at town meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. So, we're just, Advisory's saying we would like an article to be sponsored, preferably by the Board of Selectmen, but Advisory would do it if you guys vote not to, to. The town's going to decide this, absolutely.
Ultimately, if folks would rather pay the $120,000 in property taxes as opposed to whatever percentage of meals taxes, then that would be decided at a town meeting.
So, absolutely, there's a decision.
Can I ask you a question about, is that a made-up number? I mean, how do you know that it's coming out of, that people are going to, "If we do this, you're magically," how do we know that we're just not spending that $120,000 on something else that otherwise wouldn't have been spent?
Well, I think that's, that's another side of the equation.
That's what we're trying to try to, so we don't want to do that. So, that's why we're saying, "Don't earmark it." We want this to reallocate $120,000 from the pot of real estate taxes to the pot of other revenue. So, we want to keep the budget the same and say, "More of it gets paid from, from local revenue." Remember, at town meeting last year, Advisory got up and, we put a slide up and said, "These are the things we want to work on. We do think we need to really work hard to increase other revenue." And this was the first one on the list. So, we basically were doing what we promised to do. So, you know, we owe it to come back and say, you know, either we think yes or we think no. We say, "We'll come back to you, make a recommendation." So, I want to do exactly what you said. Don't increase the budget. Just have it more paid from, from local revenue, so we can keep the real estate tax increase down to something reasonable. And I also agree with you. I don't think we should do that, because every other town does. But what helps that every other town does is people won't say, "Okay, well, I'm going to go to Framingham and eat, because I don't pay but six and a quarter there." So, that's where I think it helps us, right?
That's a point I was going to make. You know, I use, I go to restaurants here in town. I go to restaurants in other towns. Never has the deciding factor been, "Ooh, am I going to have to pay a local sales tax?" You know, it's always...
Just the concept that stinks. So, that's all. I think we have some other commentary, though. I would love to hear.
Hi, Rob Anderson. I'm on the Economic Development Committee. I'm also the Community Development Director for the Town of Billrica. We recently implemented the meals tax. I am in favor of it. I think all you need to do is take a look at the surrounding communities and the fact that it's .75%. That's 75 cents on a $100 meal. When I choose to go to Starbucks and I go often, when I go in Southborough, it's 2.64. When I go in Westborough, it's 2.66. It's two cents. However, that two cents I spend in Westborough stays in that community. The Division of Local Services already tracks how much money is brought in via a meals tax, because we already have the 6.25% anyway. So, they can estimate how much each community would get based upon the revenue that they already collect. So, when we're talking about that 120,000, that's pretty secure. In the Town of Billrica, it's over half a million dollars. And what the Board of Selectmen did was, they implemented a policy amongst the board that if there was excess meals tax revenue, that that half a million dollars would go towards OPEB. That's what they did. So, that was kind of a policy that they would work on their budget for that. In Marlboro, they spend their money on economic development, and they go yearly to get their budget approved. So, there are policies that can go in place to not only address those long-term strategic issues that are going to face the community, but as well as those business development things that I think we need. If we're talking about revenue versus cost-cutting, I'd much rather generate more revenue through business development than ever think about cutting staff or cutting the services here. And I think there's the right balance. And I think the implementation of the meals tax can actually make that happen so that there is at least that little bit of buffer that can help the residents and not adversely affect the business development. I think, at least for the people here, Ashland, Marlboro, Northborough, Hudson, they all have the meals tax, and it has not harmed their business recruitment potential either. So, that if we do implement this tax, although it is now another tax on the residents, it is not going to adversely affect the business development opportunities that we can have here. And I think, you know, from at least the economic development perspective, the little bit of revenue that we could devote towards economic development could help us in the long term. So, I just wanted to give a little bit of perspective based upon being on the Economic Development Committee and my job in community development. Thank you.
If I may ask you a question. So, you have seen towns that have had established policies?
The, it was, it was very similar to what Mr. Ballantyne acknowledged. It wasn't that we get that money and it immediately goes there. The Board of Selectmen said, "What we would like to do is devote those funds, should we have excess capacity, towards OPEB." And that is kind of factored into how the budget was set up.
Well, Mr. Shea, could we not do something like that?
So, we do, so we do have, and if I screw this up, Brian, help me. So, we do have a free cash policy that basically says, "We will take a certain percentage of free cash and only apply that amount to operating. The rest of it is to one-time expenditures." So, that we're using one-time money for one-time expenditures. And we do have things like that, which tries to, you know, assign funds like that. You certainly could look to do something along those lines.
So, I'd be much more comfortable in supporting this if we were to do that.
But I just want to make sure that, that would be binding for, until you took another vote?
To change the current board, correct.
I mean, so that's all it is.
I get it.
Yeah, okay.
But I would, I would rather start out.
Yeah.
I would, that's, to me, I would be supportive if we could at least start out that way.
But I think the OPEB is a bit of a red herring, though, in that the actuary report basically said that we're on track by 2040 to be in compliance with the state requirement and actually be fully funded at that time. So, you could make the argument that we don't need to do more than we're doing now. Yeah, we could get there faster, but that's not actually required, and it's not fiscally irresponsible to do it any differently, so.
And I don't disagree with that. I mean, if OPEB, clearly, were behind the eight ball, and I think it should be either maintained or increased, but economic development? If things are earmarked to actually bringing responsible, you know, and development to town and reinvigorating our local businesses through a meals tax, then it's a smart move.
The one commonality I've heard here tonight is that the meals tax will give you options. And we're all talking now, we're all moving down past the whether we're doing it or not to, how are we going to use it? Just an observation.
Yeah.
Well, I will just say, I had questions at the last meeting, and Ms. Cook, I appreciate you going and speaking to the businesses. And I had spoken to some as well. So, I'm much more comfortable in supporting this. And, but I also like the option. I think adding it to the budget is the way I'd like to see it go. I think OPEB's very important. But I think if we're looking in a couple of years to take some of the potential money from the litigation and earmark it towards there, I think a nice little break, the taxpayers, even though it's $28, they're going to take that $28 and they're going to go to Starbucks, or they're going to go to Dunkin' Donuts, or, you know, it's just an opportunity to give something back to the taxpayers. So, that's what I would support.
All right. Mr. Healy?
No, I think I've said what I, it makes an awful lot of sense. I don't want, I don't want the question answered. I'm just sort of musing, as, it's kind of remarkable to me that, that, you know, given the momentum, that all the towns haven't gotten to this and just even the playing field, but I guess maybe just because some towns haven't gotten to it. But there's a, there's, and it kind of goes to a question you asked me, Mr. Kalenda. I, I, I'm reserving judgment right now, just because it's, I'm worried about the view of the additional money as, "Oh, great, we've got additional money," as opposed to, so in other words, rather than offsetting a tax burden, we've increased. Now, there may be justification for that, but I'm not there yet on all of the proposed increases. So, it makes sense to broaden the tax base, but it particularly makes sense to broaden the tax base if, if at least one benefit of that is that property taxes feel some relief, as opposed to, "Great, we have more money to spend."
Mm-hmm. All right. So, I think we beat that. So, we can, we'll be revisiting it later on when we get to the warrant and whether we'll include a placeholder for it or not.
Completely unrelated to this, can I just jump in while, Mr. Collins, do I have that right?
Yes.
Yeah. I know you've only been in office 24 hours, but were you here earlier when we talked with Mr. Cipriano about other, about a number of other, number of things, but including the whole zoning issue? And who's the appropriate catalyst for that?
Yes.
Is that something that is on the EDC's plate, and is that on it for a short term? You mentioned an overlay district, because it's been unclear to me who thinks they have the primary responsibility. And again, maybe it's us, but who has the primary responsibility to sort of drive that issue?
So, we were, we have been meeting with different committees in the town, and we met with the planning board. And we talked about this specific issue, about creating an overlay district. And we talked about starting with the ZAC plan that was never passed, because there's some stuff in there that's applicable. And the planning board told us, "Couldn't just do that." And so, anyway, they put the burden back on us to propose what we think would work. So, we've had some developers in that talked to us about, you know, what it would take for them. I mean, again, we don't, it's not like we have 50 acres sitting downtown and we're saying, interviewing developers. We have a lot of land that's owned by different people that have different uses. And what we're saying is, if you want to bring back the downtown area, you've got to zone it in a way that makes it by right, almost, that you can do certain things there at certain densities. Now, we've gone and we've had drawings made up of what it might look like. We're not developers. We're not proposing this is what it's going to be. But we've had feedback from people that, you know, we're trying to build apartment complexes or put Walmart there. And so, we've, we've come up with these drawings. We also came up with pictures of what the downtown used to look like in the Southborough Arms and some of the other things that were there, the old high school. So, it's not like the downtown didn't always look just the way it looks, and we're trying to change it. It looked a lot better, and it had a lot more uses, and it was a place where people went and gathered. All we can do as EDC in order to promote this is to set the conditions in place that say, if somebody enterprising came to town and said, "Boy, if I could get the people on Park Street and a couple of these houses, and maybe this lot over here where Peter Bemis would like to develop, and I could sort of organize them, sort of as a master developer, and get everybody on board, and then come in and say, 'This is what I'm proposing,' and get that approved, you know, you could change the whole downtown pretty quickly." But of course, that's never going to happen that way. But for it to happen at all, something has to change in the way we look at what we want in the downtown and that we, we send the signal that that's what we want and that it's an easy process to get it approved. And so, they've put the burden back on us to propose something. We applied for a grant from the state, one for the wastewater, one, we're going to use half of the wastewater exercise and half for having somebody help us write up zoning.
I know. I see Ms. Reynolds trying to hide in the back there.
Yes, exactly.
Has anything advanced with respect to that zoning change?
We've just gotten approval from the EA, my notes are behind me. The process, there's a process. Once we're told that we have the grant, and we come through the town, and Mr. Purple has just signed what he has to do. So, we now have the ability to interview somebody to help us with the zoning and somebody to do the wastewater study. And we're looking forward to what happens in your executive session with 54, 40.
So, the, I know there is a placeholder now for that zoning change.
That's correct.
In the warrant.
Yep.
So, we're still dealing with blank sheets of paper right now.
Correct.
With respect to that.
Right.
And we're...
But now, we're ready to go. Do you want to step up here?
But Marty, while she's come up here to answer your question, I think the Selectmen could actually take the lead in that, and they do in other towns, to say, "Here's what we think ought to happen there."
No, why don't we hear from Claire?
Well, let me just answer that, too. Is, if you look at, and Rob and I had a conversation at an EDC meeting, what happens at all these towns, you can't change it by consensus and by committees. I mean, there has to be some will on the part of the town that says, "This is where we want to go." So, whether that's Mr. Purple and the board saying that... So whether that's Mr. Purple and the board saying that, or whether it's, there has to be an executive that says, we want to raise money for our town. I mean, the town of Sutton is rezoning all kinds of land, and it's going to be a lot of industrial development, because they have a problem with their taxes. The town of Worcester would love to get back on a single tax rate, because they're losing business from town. So there's a lot of factors that go into it, but for this to happen, we can do the things that we can do to try to, as I say, set the conditions. But if somebody doesn't take a leadership position in the town to say, we want to change the revenue side of our problem, and there's ways we can do that without interfering with conservation and these other things, there's a lot of things in town that you could upgrade the value of those properties by changing the uses that would be permitted there. So something to think about.
Okay.
Claire Reynolds, I am now doing the project management for the grant, and we don't just have a blank piece of paper, there actually is verbiage on it. Very quickly, for those of you who may remember when Julie Conlee brought up an amendment to add mixed use to the downtown, it was just a very, very simple amendment. If we are going to do something for this coming town meeting, we are on a very, very short, but doable timeframe to get a very simple update, so to speak, to the current zoning, and to allow for mixed use. It's not what the planning board is looking for. They're looking for a whole comprehensive change. If you think about it, unless something gets voted on at this particular town meeting, what's going to happen is your developers will just go away completely. It will be another year at least before this can get brought up. These are only my opinions, but what happens is, and the way that this can really be, I think, put quickly and very comprehensive to the town meeting, is this town has paid for 2008 master plan, we had a 2012 MAPC plan that I believe was funded by a grant, we had the Shopsey report for housing that was done in 2015, for which they paid, I'm not sure how much. Now they're doing the master plan again. What's the one thread that went through all of these studies that came out? They want to have mixed-use zoning to allow for more variations in the business village district. What we're concentrating on is just the downtown. And there is a subcommittee meeting Thursday night that I'm going to talk to the EDC about the RFQ is being written now. The town planner has been really very, very helpful, and so that if this is going to get done, I've already talked with somebody who is already working with Shopsey, who also does zoning. So as I said, it is doable, it's very, very tight, we have the schedule that has to go, because it has to go to ALDO.
Yep.
And that's where it stands.
And I do not mean to be offensive in any way by saying blank sheets of papers, just as Mr. Collins presented his answer, saying, well, we're interviewing people to help. I just got the impression that nothing has advanced with that yet. I'm happy to hear something has advanced.
Right.
Just going back to where we started tonight with Mr. Cipriano.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay.
This, you know, the reality is, we have to go to planning board with this.
Right.
Planning board has to hold a hearing on this. Planning board is going to make a report slash recommendation to town meeting.
Understood.
And the best chance that this has of being approved is having everybody on the same page, everybody in support. So, you know, it's imperative to work as cooperatively as possible with the planning board as quickly as possible, just so we can get the public hearing scheduled, we can have the meetings with them.
It is already scheduled. They have a public hearing towards the end of January, and then they have public hearing number two that are already scheduled. So it's a case of just getting on to that schedule. The plan, they also, Karina will put the legal notice if we actually have the legal notice, which has to be posted twice before the public hearing. And so that all of those steps have been done. The thing, and I could be totally wrong, is this is just focusing on one particular, it's not the answer for all the zoning. As the planning board says, zoning is complicated. But if we want to get something done, so that, you know, things move along instead of waiting another year, we'll be into 2021 before this even gets approved. One of the things that's been said earlier is, the economy is good now, this is the time when you want developers, you want to take advantage of anybody who is thinking of developing.
I hear it. And I know that we have a placeholder in the warrant for this.
Right.
And it's just, my line of questioning was, is it going to be reasonable? And I'm hearing that there is a path that makes it reasonable.
And the thought was, it's easier to remove, I guess, the placeholder, or say it was withdrawn, than it is to try to put one in afterwards.
Correct.
If I may, Mr. Shea?
Yep.
I'm trying to wrap my head around this overlay district and what it is you're trying to do, and you keep saying you're trying to do mixed zoning downtown. There currently is mixed zoning allowed downtown. What is it that you're trying to fix with this overlay district that's not currently allowed? I'm very confused on this.
If you think back to when they had the two East Main Street thing, the discrepancy was, or the differences of opinion, so to speak, was the whole thing about the mixed use to having.
A specific mixed use?
Right.
Not mixed juice in general, I mean.
It was for the housing.
So is that the piece you're trying to fix?
That's the part we're trying to fix. And that was the original amendment, or revised amendment, that Julie Conlee first presented to the planning board, okay? We're more than glad to work with them, but the problem that you have is, particularly now, at least my interpretation, particularly now, where you have them working on a new master plan?
Uh huh.
This is going to be a year, a year and a half before this is really ready to go and get voted on.
No, I agree, but my question is, again, that we keep hearing that we need mixed use downtown, but nobody has, yet, until tonight, has specifically told me, what in addition to the mixed use downtown are you looking for? And I don't want to touch on specifics on a pending litigation site. I don't think we need to go there on who says what, or who agrees with what. I just, I'm trying to be specific as to what you're looking for. I understand you want to bring businesses downtown, but aren't a lot of the businesses currently allowed in with our mixed-use zoning that we have?
We're allowed to do everything except for what, and I don't want to just say that this is the only reason that we're doing it, is because of the, when Peter Bemis proposed initially, what it was that he was looking for, because that's not it. And we had taken that to the planning board, and one of the questions that came up was, well, because of having these apartments, do you call them hotels, motels, flop houses, whatever?
Oops.
I don't think that's in the code.
Probably not, you know. We do want to keep it out of there. But, so it's to define, can you have three, and one of the planning board members actually asked this question, does that mean you have, that three are allowed, that five are allowed? That, well, you know, logic would dictate, it kind of depends on the size of the building, which is restricted by other zoning, which is already in place.
And why I ask Claire is, I get, I've gotten asked this a lot from people, that'll say, what is it they're trying to do downtown? And when, you know, I think it's great that you've now been specific, is what you're actually looking to do and why you're looking to do it, I think that's a step in the right direction. I just wish, maybe I could have known that a little sooner, that's all.
But I'll just.
Go ahead.
Offer, EDC has been talking about this for a long time, and has actually shown us presentations on the big screen of what it would look like, what that dual use, what that mixed use would be. It could be a beautiful section of downtown that would have businesses and some apartments over top. Visually, that's all it is. And if that, to me, that would not only revitalize that town, hopefully bring some new energy into that area with people actually living there, not thousands of people, but, you know, an influx of residents that would live there, that would also spend there, that would, other people would come visit them, spend there, it could revitalize that whole downtown section. So that's what they've shown us on the big screen. That's visually what I've been looking forward to for a long time, and if, you know, I'm glad that it's moving forward, and if planning doesn't agree, now, to Chairman Shea's comment, I would love to see them supportive of our downtown initiative, and our residents, and our businesses, and help revitalize it through this one change for this one area. If they don't, for their reasons, so be it, I strongly suggest we still go to town meeting with the bylaw change, to see if the entirety of the town would like to see that.
And again, Dan, I'm not saying that, you know, the renderings and everything, but my question just was on what's being presented, and what is it that you're looking to do? Because you are currently allowed shops and whatnot downtown, and the renderings were great because it showed that, but now I have the additional piece, and I thank you for that.
The important part of the overlay district is that what the town votes can be done there can be done by right.
Exactly.
That's the most important part. Right now, that's not the case, because the way the zoning is, you know, a building has to fit a certain way. If you're saying, so you can set the whole conditions, that the FAR has to be a certain way, the height has to be a certain way, but within that envelope, you can do mixed use, you can put in apartments, you bring some life to downtown. I mean, that's a big part of what they're doing in Worcester and everywhere else. You want to bring neighborhoods back, you can't just put retail there, you've got to put people there, and you've got to create a 24-hour environment.
And currently, you need special permits for a number of uses that we want to change that list.
Can I get a developer's agreement to put through the process and any special permits to stop that?
It's going to happen.
And mixed use also includes not only uses, but things like pedestrian access, plazas, gathering areas and so forth, which affects setbacks.
Which is in the dream scenario that we put out there, but we're not developers, so we can't tell you that's exactly how it would happen.
You need to think about a wide range of design features that you build in, mostly by right, as a matter of fact, so people know what they can get.
One final question, and then I'll stop. When do you think, on a timeline of actually having something, I know you're working on consultants and everything, Claire, what do you think is a timeline of actually having something concrete, that maybe it's an idea or something, but when do you think that will be available?
It has to be for January 7th, 7th or 8th.
It does, okay.
So everybody probably is sitting there saying, you know, this is really kind of crazy. Dan hit it right on the head in terms of what, you know, for this is phase one, so to speak, okay? In order to be able to do this, it just has to be focused on one part. It's kind of like if you took the old ZAC recommendation, and you just pulled out part of it. If you wait and do the whole thing together, we'll be having this conversation.
10 years from now.
Five years from now.
Yeah.
And I think the way to, that this will be accepted, is the fact that, how many more studies do we have to pay for, which keep telling us the same thing? Let's just do it.
Thank you.
So just, I'm the one who got us off onto this. So I thought it was going to be a shorter tangent than it ended up being, but incredibly helpful for me, I appreciate everything that you've said. But it sounds like what is going to happen is you folks are in the process, and you're somewhere, ways along that process, of developing a proposed overlay district specifically for downtown.
Right, and that will.
Yes, yes?
Okay.
Okay, is that a yes?
That's a yes.
Okay. Your target date for finishing that?
That's a yes? Okay.
Your target date for finishing that is January 7th?
No, 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 no. Just, I think it surprises to say, it's just that one part of it, not the whole overlay right up. Okay, all right. So we'll have the answer to that.
Whether it's narrow or broader, your target date is January 7th.
Yeah, it has to be the narrow one.
And the reason it's January 7th is so you can have the hearing before the planning board, in time to get that hearing done, in time for town meeting.
There you go.
That is your process.
There you go.
And at some point, you will be coming back to us, asking us to support what you have come up with.
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Could planning decide not to put it on the agenda as a way to say, we're not ready for this, we don't want it? Could they not put it on the agenda? Could they not take a vote? Is there other procedural ways to make it not happen?
The planning board told us that we prepare and submit to them, they will review, and whether they report favorably or unfavorably, they have to.
They're required to.
They have to report it to the town meeting, but they could say, we don't, we're not in favor of this.
And Mr. Cipriano confirmed that earlier tonight.
Yes.
They have to have the hearing.
So just to recap, we're actually on item E on our agenda. Mr. Collins.
Again, I apologize.
I'm really, really hoping that EDC's update was heavily focused on the overlay district.
We can consider this the update.
So we've, we're 99% through the update.
We can consider this the update, absolutely, yeah. But yeah, that's, they have told us that they have to report out to the town for, whether they approve it or in favor of it or not.
Okay.
I'm done, thank you.
Anything else as part of your update?
Thank you.
No, that actually encompasses almost everything we were going to talk about.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And thanks to everybody from EDC for coming. No, I'm just going to plow through. All right, Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Given the hour, I'll keep it brief. I had one item that I wanted the board's input on. It's concerning the 5G policy that the Board of Selectmen, you know, will be looking to implement at some point in the near future. I've sent you input that has been received back from the planning board. A lot of that is deferential to special counsel, as well as to Ms. Davis, who is, you know, obviously, shown to be extremely knowledgeable in this subject. My question is this, so this is going to be a Board of Selectmen policy. I had conversations with the town planner, and obviously, in order for this to be something that has flexibility and the ability to change, should it be shown that what we're looking to do isn't working, that the board can change a policy much quicker than a town meeting can change a bylaw. So the suggestion is that this should be a policy of the Board of Selectmen to try and address some of these small cell wireless installations. My question is this, so the draft policy that was put together by Attorney Loffman, who was the special counsel that was asked to provide us a basis for moving forward, has got some things that I think that planning and some of the people who spoke at planning have identified as trying to tighten up the legislation a little bit, trying to put more controls over what you can put in certain places, and where these certain places are that can be located. There's also been discussions with, about the town of Burlington, their selectmen's policy on the applications for small cell wireless installations, has been touted as, you know, a best practice policy, so to speak, on this issue. I'm trying to figure out what to give you, how to give you, so that when the board starts having this discussion, you've got all the information that you want in front of you. And I'm kind of in between as to, am I going to go back to Attorney Loffman and say, look, I need draft language from you to try to tighten up some of these areas that have been identified. The other alternative is, should we be looking at the town of Burlington's policy, which has been in place for a period of time now, has been tested in some of these application processes, and has worked well in controlling these issues, and even companies have moved on, rather than going through the processes outlined, and looking at other communities that may not have processes at all to, for installations. Some guidance as. that may not have processes at all to, for installations. Some guidance as to where you'd like me to start?
Is there any sort of deadline looming? In other words?
No, there's, there's not a deadline looming. I mean, the deadline is when someone comes in and makes an application to put an installation in, and you don't have anything, and they say, great. So.
Should we ask Attorney Loffman what he thinks about the, or she thinks about the Burlington language?
I can. She, and she did not develop the Burlington language and that. But I'm more than happy, you know, to, I'm just trying to limit the scope of the work. I think it may be easier to work from that policy and to see whether that addresses more of the, more of the issues. So Heidi Davis is now on our ADA committee. And so I have reached out to her and just tried to get her opinion, you know, if this Burlington policy from her, and you know, I want to say expert, because she does really, you know, is very knowledgeable about a lot of these things, is it better to use Burlington as the basis? Or is it better to use what we were given as a boilerplate draft and work from that instead?
I guess my recommendation, just thinking, I guess our next meeting is what, January 6th or 7th?
Yes.
You know, and we've got holidays in between now and then. You know, I'd like to take a look at the Burlington policy. I mean, it's a bigger place than us. I don't know if that means much. And it's a, you know, it's, it's a, I guess it's kind of a similar location, though. They've got a bunch of highways, we got a bunch of highways. I don't know if that, how that impacts the policy. But if we, between now and January 6th, take a look at that policy, and maybe if you're successful in talking to Ms. Davis, maybe we can make a better informed decision on.
Yeah, it's a great idea. No reason to reinvent the wheel.
I'm, I will, I'm happy to send out to you the policies. The policy from Burlington include the application form and everything and the design standards, so that you can take a look at it and see if this is something that we feel we'd more easily modify and then have council, you know, review from that point of view, rather than working backwards.
Should we, or have we given any counsel to our council on this, to say, as our approach to this generally, to say, we want to have as tight a restriction as we can to, without going over the line where the FCC is going to say you can't do it? Or should we leave some flexibility for people to actually do this? I don't know that we've had much of that conversation.
We really haven't. And I, and I'm trying, I guess I'm trying to set this up for you so that I give you as much of that information to allow you to go through and not, I don't want to say waste time, but say have a meeting where we.
Where we're knowledgeable enough to give some instructions to the attorney, say, if the spectrum is here from let them all in to restrict it totally, where are we on that? So we can tell the attorney to aim at this point, and let's have something that fits our intent.
Would it make sense for you to send us both what the Burlington policy and what the attorney has developed so far, just so we can kind of compare between?
So you have a copy, you have a copy of what the attorney developed so far. I will resend that to you as well as what the Burlington policy.
Why don't we do that?
So you can take a look at both.
Holiday reading.
Add as an item on the 7th, the agenda on the 7th, to discuss that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, I will do that.
Anything else?
If I could ask a question?
You know, very quickly.
My name is Will Warren. I just wanted to, do you know of any cases where an application was made and then denied, and then they were taken to court in the state?
In the state?
Yeah.
I'm not aware.
I don't know.
But I'm not real knowledgeable about it, but I'm not aware that that has happened. My understanding is that the wireless companies that are coming into communities where there are existing policies which put regulations as to how and where they can put some of the small cell technology has turned out to be a little bit onerous. So they'll move on at this point to, to go to other communities where there really don't, there isn't such regulation.
Is that what we want?
Well, I don't think in some respects that they can go on to other communities. They may do that for right now, but these are very short-range towers. And so if they're going to roll it out here, they have to put.
We can continue this discussion on the, on the 7th, but I want to continue with our agenda.
But also can find out if there have been lawsuits pretty easily, I think. I have no idea. It's not space I'm familiar with.
Chair's report. I have nothing tonight. Members' reports.
Very quick. I will just say that I've had one meeting with the head of school at St. Mark's and their finance director, you know, sat with them for about an hour, very, I thought a very productive meeting. We both exchanged views on what we think is important. And I'm optimistic. And I'm sitting down with the head of school for Fay and the head of their board of trustees just after the New Year.
Ms. Brascio.
Just quickly, I just wanted to say we had a very successful volunteer recognition breakfast. We had over 30, roughly 35 people there. All members of the board were there, which was great. We had a great opportunity to thank those that follow, that do volunteer and let them know how much we appreciate it. So it was a good turnout, we hope, for a better turnout next year. But overall, a great day, great morning. Thank you.
That's the only thing I was going to bring up. And are you the impetus for that? Yes?
Yes.
All right, see? So it wouldn't have happened were it not for the, the work of Lisa Brascio. You've continued to bring people together at that community house through the efforts of helping our veterans over the years, our deployed soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines, and as well as through these, you know, breakfasts and thanking our volunteers. Very well done, Lisa Brascio. Thank you.
One quick comment also. I had a chance to meet with the golf course committee the other evening. And apparently, there are some members of the committee who feel like their job is done for this phase of the effort. And there may be some turnover there. So I think that we ought to be planning for that. But also, we ought to find a way to express great gratitude for the hard work that the golf course committee has done to manage the transition, along with Mr. Purple and others, and public safety building project, to get to a place where the course now looks great. It looked great before. It snowed here, at least. And clubhouse renovations are coming into completion probably in the spring here. So I think that there have been a lot of activity, a lot more time that that group developed and they're devoted to it than they thought they were going to do at the beginning. But I think we've got a great product, and they deserve a lot of kudos for that. So we need to think of ways to recognize them, as the committee seems to be changing to a different phase here, and may have some positions that we need to think about filling. So thanks to them.
One other thing for me?
Sorry.
To go along with what Mr. Stivers is saying, I agree, the golf course is looking good. The clubhouse is, is coming along very nicely. There was a resident in town that spoke with me recently about maybe some other options that the town can look into in terms of, you know, could we build an indoor section to have people who would love, I know that, I know specifically people who went golfing today indoors, you know, in the next town over, and loved it. Are there ways that we could bring additional players, additional participation, additional revenues to the town, if we were to do something like that at the golf course, assuming space and someone would be interested in coming to do that? And also, you know, establishing programs where maybe that's, the course could be used on, you know, throughout the winter with, you know, cross-country skiing programs and other ways to use that great space that the town now owns.
Are you talking about a, like a simulator?
Yes.
Yeah, indoor driving range kind of thing.
That's very interesting.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can, I'll take Mr. Kalunda first, and then, and then just to Mr. Stivers' point. Mr. Kalunda did bring this issue to me, and I have provided him the information for contact from Mr. Harrison for the management company. Obviously, they have the contract year-round. They only use the course for, you know, nine, 10 months, nine months out of the year. So this would be something maybe they'd be interested in. I also have asked the question, which I talked with you about, is just to see concerning the conservation restriction, I want to see how big the envelope is with regard to the clubhouse, because we're not talking about doing something within the existing footprint of the clubhouse. We're going to have to build out. And, and I think that there may be room to do it. I just want to make sure that there's no issue. Before we go, even go down the road, let's make sure we don't have an issue with the conservation.
Build a second story for the driving range.
If we have to go up, maybe, you know, then we can, we can go up. Although, there's going to be a great view off of that deck down the, down the first fairway. Mr. Stivers, to your point, I think it was always envisioned, at least in my mind, it was always envisioned, that this golf committee was going to help with this transitional process, the same way that the master plan for the golf course, the CR and everything and that, helped with that piece of the transition. And once the course, you know, the clubhouse is done, the course improvements are done, the parking lot's done, then the golf committee, the charge is going to change. So that committee is going to operate as the conduit between the management company and this board, and try and make sure that everything is working well. And if there are needs, we know about them, and we can plan for those, for those things. So I think it's not so much people going away. I know this has been difficult on this committee, because it's been a lot of stops and starts. But I think it's, to your point, and you said it quite clearly, a lot of great improvements have happened over there, and things have turned out, at the end of the day, very, very nicely. So it's just going to be looking, I think, to reconstitute at least their charge.
And I think that's their intent, their understanding, yeah.
Everybody on that committee has done an excellent job, to be commended. I completely agree with that. And I would much rather entertain a discussion with them about modifying the charge that they have, rather than, you know, disband.
I think they're open to that, and some more so than others. But I just wanted to raise the point that there's going to be a transition there, apparently, and we need, it'd be great if we could get out in front of it, have the conversation with them.
I don't think you're going to be so fortunate, like the building committee for public safety, and the study committee is just going to pick up and just become the building committee. But it'd be great if we, if some of those people could, you know, or all of them could come forward in the next iteration.
Which brings us to consent agenda. I'm going to request that we address item E separately. Are there any other items folks would like to address individually?
Nope.
No.
All those in favor of items A through D and F?
Second.
Oh, actually, I'll make a motion that we approve those. I know I want to move fast. Do it by the rules, Brian. I move items A through D and F on the consent agenda. Move seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, I presume. Item E, just wanted to make note of the recommendation from town council, not only to appoint Ms. Lacy, but also that we appoint her and designate her as a special municipal employee. I just wanted to draw our specific attention to that. The recommendation for that and the reasons for that is in the packet material as presented by Mr. Cipriano. So I will move item E as printed in the, moved seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Brian, could I congratulate Mr. Warren on his appointment? He showed up here for the ADA appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. And don't forget to, don't forget to get sworn in, please.
Did you think it might go one way or the other? You were just hanging in.
Just squeaked through.
Thank you for stepping forward.
Other matters properly before the board, we have closing of the March 28, 2020 town meeting warrant. Before we do that, I just wanted to go through the warrant itself. There are what I'll call the standard articles that we, that are typically included in the town meeting warrant. And I'm going to say for argument purposes that that will take us up to Article 20, which is the CPA projects. So is there anybody that wants to have any discussion? And we're not looking to take positions on the articles at this point. This is just confirming all the articles that will be in the warrant. There'll be times as we proceed to take positions. Anything that people wanted to make note of before Article 20?
No, the one thing I need to note is that Articles 16 and 17, I'm hoping that I can just get clearance for it. But right now, I'll recuse on those two articles, 16 and 17. They both have to do with bonding.
So with that, there are other articles that are not typically included. We can just run through those quickly. Article 21, little background, this is something that I had recommended to Mr. Purple that we include, based on the number of times that we had to list the same people to get reappointed. Unfortunately, the committee reappointments and the time that they have to get sworn in coincides with typically the 4th of July and other vacations. So there's more often than not conflicts. I've had discussions with the town clerk about this. I think there's general support between us and the town clerk. I think we were originally advocating 45 days. He's suggesting 30 days, but we can hammer that out as we, as we move forward. But the intent of that is just to give folks a little bit more time, recognizing it's summer, the boards and committees don't typically meet as much, just, so it's not as much of an administrative burden on our part to keep putting them on the agenda. Article 22, we had touched upon, reducing the borrowing amount for public safety building. Article 23, we had voted at a, one or two meetings ago to adopt that mass general law. Mr. Stivers, the next Article 24 was the, is a placeholder to include, as you had discussed, adopting the safety zone. Article 25, adopt local meals tax. So we discussed this earlier tonight, obviously, and at a previous meeting. I'll ask now, is this something that the board wants to A, proceed with, including as a placeholder article, and B, are we comfortable proposing this article? Do we want to have the advisory committee propose this article? How do we want to address this?
So I'm, I'm interested in, I would be happy if the board would propose it. I want to ensure that it's properly allocated. And if not, I, if not, I don't support it. If it's properly allocated, like we were having some discussions, then I would be supportive to the point where I'd like to see us actually recommend it. So.
I agree, I would propose it, but then sort out the details after that.
I would be interested, as Ms. Cook sits here, this was, she's put a lot of time and a lot of effort into this. Is this something that you and/or advisory would be interested in presenting? Obviously, if you do, then, then.
You could jointly propose it.
We could jointly propose it, yeah. That would be fine, but I, it's like your opinion on this.
We could care less about whether we sponsor or not. But we don't, you know, if it's going to be, for lack of a better term, earmarked towards something, we wouldn't support that. So we'd do a separate one, I guess, because we do not want it earmarked. We want it just a plain O, support the tax, pass it, and so they can just go right into the general revenue. So I don't care, we don't care if we.
I mean, you've done all the work for presenting at town meeting. I mean, obviously, you're going to present for or against it anyway.
Yep.
So.
So we may have two of them.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine, including it in the warrant, and I'm fine with the Board of Selectmen proposing it.
I'm fine with that, too.
Me, too.
I'm in that camp as well. I would, I'd support having it, and I think it ought to be on the board. Hope, and obviously.
Jointly with advisory as well. I mean, if you guys, I don't want to, I'm not, you know, sharpening my elbows here.
Well, we're not, I mean, we don't normally propose Warner, because we, we vote on them, but we don't, we're not the sponsor of the articles.
I mean, we are the Board of Selectmen. So I think it is, you know, it's something that is going to affect, could affect every resident in town. I mean, most things.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with us proposing it. I just, I just wanted to make Ms. Cook clear that I wasn't throwing elbows around, you know, trying to.
In fact, I mean, I just, I do think it probably looks better for you two to, to propose it and to sponsor it. Because if you didn't, obviously, you know, why not? They normally do. Advisory has done articles in the past, but not many. It's been very few and far in between, as far as things that had our name on them, as far as sponsored it goes.
So why don't we move forward, including it as a placeholder? And obviously, to use my same words earlier, this is a blank sheet of paper right now. The way it's written, there's no language in there for it. So we can hammer that out in positions, depending on how it's written, can follow from there. So it will be included. Item 26, amend town code to add accessibility compliance committee. This we had discussed with the ADA committee meeting or two ago. Amend zoning bylaw to establish a downtown overlay district. We discussed that during Mr. Collins' report. Article 28, we will be discussing an executive session.
Frank, can I just ask one quick question? I'm sorry, on 27. So once, can, do we have the ability to go back and say, for instance, planning board does support the downtown overlay? Could, is it a big deal to change who it's proposed by, is my question, where the warrant is?
No.
No, okay. That was all.
No, I think the key thing is just making sure the article itself.
So this is just for placeholders, it's not, who's presenting, who's not presenting?
The purpose, the purpose of doing this and getting our placeholders and everything in, and closing the warrant is you have, you have now limited the universe of what you could potentially have on your warrant. Now, some of these things, I'm not going to be so bold as to pick something, but some of these may not grow up to be articles that are going to come before town meeting, because they're just simply not going to be ready, or someone decides I might not need something. So, but that's why you're doing this, is trying to say, this is the universe of everything we may have. So, but that's why you're doing this, is trying to say, this is the universe of everything we may have, but it's not necessarily what the final product may look like.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't restricted, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Article 29 will be proposed by the Planning Board for lighting bylaw update. Article 30, site plan approval bylaw update by the Planning Board. Article 31, it's to be determined, Mr. Cipriano had touched upon this one. This is the zoning bylaw update. Article 32 is proposed by the School Committee for Bonding Authorization for Finn boiler replacement. Article 33, again by the School Committee to establish an OPEB account for the school department. Articles 34, 35, 36... 37 and 38 have been articles proposed by the Town Clerk to clean up bylaw issues there. So we can, again, we don't have that information yet, but the Town Clerk has requested placeholder articles for those items. Article 39, noise bylaw.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So on the noise bylaw, we had a citizen that has forwarded to this board a proposal for a noise bylaw. Is this a placeholder for that citizen? Or the chief has also forwarded, well, we've received a copy of something the chief has worked on with Mr. Stivers. Is this, which placeholder, which bylaw is this placeholder for?
So, at this point, that's an excellent question.
Could be either, yeah.
And I'd say the warrant is silent on which one, which noise bylaw it applies to. But there's no reason it couldn't be both. And I say that because if the citizen that sent something along is not happy with the version that Chief Polis had sent along, there's nothing stopping that citizen from moving forward with a citizen's petition to have an alternate from that which is proposed.
Except he can't get it on the warrant now if we close it tonight, right?
So, I saw your point. So we've had previous opinions from council that once we close the warrant, if someone presents us a citizen petition before the board posts the warrant, that it is probably in the board's best interest to include those. And historically, we have, simply because the other option is it can generate a special Town Meeting, which then causes additional time and expense and everything in that. So that's for the past several years, we have closed the warrant in the same fashion we have, but any citizen petitions that come in between now and the time that we post the warrant, hopefully in the, you know, middle third week of February, we've included in the warrant.
So that would be the timeframe, if a citizen would want to do their petition, they would need to get their signatures and turn it in.
So if they didn't feel comfortable with the way that the board's noise bylaw was going, then obviously, a competing article could be submitted. I think in this fashion, it gives a little bit more of an opportunity for that back and forth discussion to try to mold it with one article, because if it's a citizen petition, we really don't have an ability to change it until we get to the floor of Town Meeting.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and again, this is just my opinion on this, but I think the noise bylaw is something that is going to take a lot of iterations. It's going to take a lot of massaging. And whether we're even going to be ready by March 28 is not a certainty. Again, just my humble opinion, and I'm only speaking for myself on that. But I think to try, I guess, there's just a lot of, there's a lot of competing interests here, and there's going to need to be a lot of negotiation and compromise. And not, you know, one, you know, stake on the ground, this is the way it's going to be, or die is not going to, I don't think is going to survive.
Are there a lot of large parties in Southborough, or what's the, I mean, are people boom boxes?
You know, my...
Late, I'm getting punchy at 10 o'clock.
No, my read from, my read from feedback is concern with commercial landscape equipment. And I think if, you know, if it's, I see this going two ways. This is either going to be a discussion about hours, or this is going to be a discussion about levels and what's allowable. And if it goes the way of what noise levels and what's allowable, and it adversely impacts landscape companies and people's ability to hire those firms.
As we had for public safety and Main Street, if you're now going to affect people's ability to get their lawn cut unless...
Reality is, a lot of people utilize lawn services in this town, and leaf cleanup services and all that. And if it impacts the ability for people to hire them, that's going to be a tough...
I think construction is another topic that comes up frequently, as I understand from the chief. People complain about contractors starting work at 6:00 AM and...
That's an hour fix, though. I mean, you make a quiet time and...
So we don't need to...
Okay.
Just my additional observation from reading through the two of these has currently written, both of them are completely and utterly unenforceable. One of them has, if you can hear something within 150 feet, are you kidding me? That's a legal standard?
What kind of police state are we going to have there?
And the other one has, the other one talks about decibel levels and everything like that, but, you know, anybody who's ever, who's ever, you know, been involved in a drunk driving case, I've tried, you know, tons of them when I was a, you know, a kid prosecutor, the device, I mean, you're inviting litigation. You know, and who maintains the, I mean...
Marty, every selectman needs to be outfitted with one of those decibel devices.
Just carrying them around to see if the noise is too loud?
I think the selectmen's meeting has already violated the ordinance, so...
Currently, currently, those, both of these are completely unenforceable.
So, this, do, A, you know, do we want to include this as a board-sponsored article?
No.
No, not today.
I guess I do, but obviously...
Well, potentially, I think it's something we can look at, you know, the one that was forwarded over that the chief and Sam worked on. I think that's something that I'd like to take a look at over the course of the next year. I don't think it's ready for Town Meeting.
All right, so who's going to, well, my next question is, if we're going to do it, who's going to be the champion to lead this, to work for it, to develop it?
Over the course of the next year?
Over the, well, no, if we're going to include it as a placeholder article for this upcoming Town Meeting, which of the five of us is going to be the champion to lead the effort?
Not I.
Not I.
I just took a step backwards, no way.
I don't support it, so I don't know why I would, I'm not going to lead the effort.
Previously, if we're going to do it, I would be happy to work on it, but clearly, there's not a lot of support for it here, so I think...
Not today for March Town Meeting. I would be certainly interested in tweaks and looking at it and coming up with something that I think can pass Town Meeting, because I don't think this can.
So do you, I'm looking at you, Mr. Stivers, if you're going to be the champion for it, do you feel confident that you can have something in place that would be ready for the March 28 Town Meeting?
Well, I do, but I'm not, you know, it's not clear that it's something that I can guarantee that the community is going to support in general, but I think that based on what has worked in other towns, and the enforceability is a good question, and there are ways that other towns have dealt with that one, as a matter of fact, that it seems to me, if you believe in the concept, which I do, that it's worth an effort to do as good a job as you can with it and see what happens with it. And it may be voted down at Town Meeting, and that will teach us what the sentiment is in the community for it, may give us ideas about what needs to be fixed or worked on more, or maybe goes down in flames and gee, we'll never try that again, kind of thing. But you don't know unless you try, so I think it's worth the effort. Plus, apparently, the citizen petition thing is a likely route if we don't take it up. And I think we can probably do a better job of it than that particular draft does, so...
All right. Well, one of the challenges with that is, what, I would love to see something like this have more, like, discussion of than, suddenly, it's in here, and now we're being asked to support it, to support a concept that I have known nothing about. Well, I know something about it, but that I'm not supportive of it. I mean, I'm not even going to vote to support it for this, to put on the warrant. And if a citizen's petition comes up, I mean, we saw what happened last year. I mean, there were tons of citizens' petitions and took hours, and some of them had like one vote from the floor. I mean, you know, if whoever the person is that's presenting it really does their homework and really garners great support in the community, awesome, you know, have at it. You know, the other way to do it is we really take the time to work with the police chief, work with others, and over the, as Lisa's saying, over this year, and say, you know what? We've come up with a pretty good, comprehensive plan that has got support across the board, and we're going to put it on next year's Town War. The town has gone without a noise bylaw for as long as the town has been here. So I don't know that there's any dramatic need to suddenly do something. That's why I asked, are there massive parties going on that I haven't been invited to, or what's going on?
Yes, yes.
You're there.
According to the chief.
Isn't that a members' reporting thing we should be reporting on?
So I guess just to put a closure on this, is there a motion to include this as a board-sponsored article for the March 2020 Annual Town Meeting?
Not for me currently, what's been presented.
Yeah, I would move for that, but...
Mr. Stivers moves for...
I'm not hoping, I'm not expecting a second, but I'm...
I will second it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I will second it. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of including this? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It fails. So it will not be a board-sponsored article? And I guess we can pass word to the individual who has sent along an article that he can, if he would like to proceed with a citizen petition article, he can do that. Article 40 is intended for an increase in appropriation for the De Petrie Field repairs.
So real quick on this, Mr. Chairman, this is something that in all likelihood does not grow up to be an actual article. So the recreation has, there is an appropriation the Town Meeting had made for De Petrie Field repairs, and the last two bid processes have come in over that amount. I know the new director is now working with the architect and feels pretty confident that this article is not going to be needed, but puts the placeholder in just in case there may be something. But again, this is something we hope that does not grow up to be an article, just a placeholder at this point. There are two other articles that were brought forward to me. The first one was brought forward by the Veterans Agent to accept local options under Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, for an increase in veterans' benefits for those veterans who are permanently disabled. It's short money, I'll be getting more detail from him on that. And the other one is something that Ms. Braccio is familiar with. We have had a resident whose daughter is over at Finn. I had the pleasure of sitting with her in her class earlier this year, talk about banning plastics, banning plastic bags and plastic straws and the like in Southborough. And as you're aware, on the statewide level, there is a legislation moving very quickly, and hopefully would be enacted soon, on a statewide ban on single-use plastic bags, which takes care of the bigger piece of it. However, there have been discussions with Mrs. Hale and the young girl's father that she may like to go forward still with this ban on plastic straws in Southborough. And communication has been difficult back and forth, asking if the board wants to consider, you know, to put an article on to allow that to move forward, or whether that's something that you would be more, you think would be more germane to a citizen petition article.
I'm happy to start. I mean, I think that's an excellent citizen's petition opportunity. You know, I'm not a fan of, I've seen the amount of waste, and plastic waste that goes in, in particular in the ocean, often by other countries that come here. We do enough ourselves, and it's awful. And we have to cut down, you know, responsibly ways that we can. Give me a good paper bag that actually can fit more than two things without falling apart, that'd be great, too. But in terms of a plat, in terms of, you know, us now moving, you know, mandating, you know, nobody in town can use a plastic straw, I despise a paper straw. I will toss that, all right, they're awful.
That's why you're not getting invited to parties.
I don't care, they are awful, all right? They fall apart, they change the taste, they're awful.
Would you like to borrow my stainless steel straw?
No. No. So, but, but if there's a citizen who feels so strongly, and again, can garner great, we're, you know, we're a few months out from Town Meeting. I've done no analysis across town if people would be supportive of the Board of Selectmen mandating that you can no longer have a plastic straw. So if a citizen would love to do that and garner that support and go out and do all that hard work, have at it, all right? And I think that's a great opportunity.
And the threshold for an annual Town Meeting for signatures on a citizen petition is ridiculously low to, you know, to do that, so...
Which I think is a, is that a state law, or is that a, or is that a local law?
State law.
It is state, yeah.
Right, so if they want to do that, great, but anyway, that's where I stand.
Is there a motion?
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
I just want to commend this young lady. She's seven years old, I think. She's very, very young, to want to step forward and to make a stand and want to try to bring her community. So I agree with you, but I also commend her on the effort that, you know, she has made to this point to actually write a letter and to speak to Mr. Purple and Ms. Hale. So I commend her for that.
Same, same here.
Absolutely agree.
And I would not be surprised if you do have a citizen petition article that you then get to make a recommendation on, comes forward.
There you go, perfect.
Okay.
Is there a motion, though, for a board-sponsored article for banning plastic straws? Not hearing any. One other item that I had was the email from Mr. Malinowski talking about Capitol Committee.
So I had...
Something that needs to go Town Meeting, is that board action?
I had a conversation with Mr. Malinowski, and there was agreement that it probably is better for this to be established as an ad hoc, and then to allow, you know, give it a chance to develop and see how that works. And then, once you know what works and how you want it to do, then make it a standing committee.
What, I'm just curious, and Kathy, what happened to the Capitol Budget Committee? It existed, not that long ago.
It did, it did. It was a while ago, it was when I first...
I was on it, I was the chair of it when it went away. And it went away because nobody would listen to us. I mean, we would do all this work, I'm not joking, we'd do this work, and none of you guys from the Board of Selectmen, and we'd do those recommendations, and then the Board of Selectmen would just do what they wanted to do. They didn't listen to anything that we did, so we said, why are we doing this? And so we just kind of all went away, so that's what happened.
It disbanded, they couldn't get people to refill it, so it was reconstituted.
You would do all this work, and literally, you'd sit here, and you would, the board would just override everything and make their own decision and pay no attention to all the work we'd done.
Was it because of leadership?
Before Kathy was chair.
We are getting punchy here.
Probably, probably.
I think that, I think it makes sense, my view anyways, that maybe...
But I actually think it's needed. I really think that with all, I mean, it would help so much to have a committee that really focused on capital. Did the budget take, you know, Marty and Brian have so much to do with all this stuff. Actually have a committee that really will focus on this, I think it's a great idea.
And it sounds like there's interest from the group that just completed a highly successful Capitol project to join this group.
But I think the Public Works Planning Board actually could do that, that's within their charter, as a matter of fact.
I actually think the idea of doing it ad hoc and seeing if there's enough people who are interested and...
So at the end of the day, it's not a warrant article, but, right.
And is the person who's proposed it interested in being on the committee?
We thought you'd proposed it.
All right, so is there anything else that folks had for placeholder articles for the Annual Town Meeting?
Nope.
Is there a motion to close the warrant?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Also, I'm also recusing on, where'd it go, Article 32, bonding for Finn, yeah, same.
You don't need to do that now. Article two, because there's a bond, is a Capitol bonding article further up, Article... Yeah, it did, there, so what we've done with our Capitol is we've separated the Capitol out so that the articles that require bond, bonding, Article 11, vote to borrow.
I recuse on that as well.
But Marty, why are you individually, you know, we're just closing it. You need to go through everyone, do we all need to go through, I mean, you just don't support at Town Meeting?
No, no, and, but to your point is... No, no, and, but, but to your point, is that these article numbers are gonna change a little bit, so we're gonna move the financials with the financials and everything and that, but I think just the fact that he needs to recuse himself from any of the borrowing articles is...
It's done at the time, but anyway.
No, no, it's just, it's, it's just an excess of caution, because it's...
You never know.
Well, it's, it's, it's...
And just so I'm clear for the rec, for the minutes tonight, so you're recusing from...
On the bonding articles.
From taking any, even to include them in the warrant?
I'm just recusing from, from voting for those items, yes.
See, we're not voting for them today. Anyway, that's my point, we're not voting for them, just whether or not they're gonna be there.
Just an amount of precaution, yeah.
I understand.
An abundant of caution.
But I don't, all right, it's just, it's a precedent that is not...
The record and the minutes reflect that Mr. Healy is recusing from action on the articles that involve borrowing.
Correct.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. The board will be entering executive session per MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, Exemption Six, to consider the purchase, lease, or value of real estate, Parcel 5440. As the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, the board will not be returning to open session. This requires a roll call vote. Shay, aye?
Healy, aye.
Brash, you aye?
Wendy, aye.
Stivers, aye. We are in executive session.